This conference will now be recorded.
With friends like these.
All right, it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Thanks, everybody for joining us. We'll go through some of the things we need to discuss, like reopening and budget and support Smyrna and funeral and all that kind of stuff. As we get a little bit later in the meeting, in the interest of time for those that have joined us from UCB, I'd like to go ahead and Tammy, if you're ready, open it up for that discussion and go from there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to turn it over to Tom and/or Rusty. I know Rusty has a PowerPoint presentation and Rusty, you want to introduce the representatives from UCB, please?
Yes, ma'am. We have four representatives from UCB. We have Mr. Dwayne Barnes. He is the President and Head of US Operations. Scott Sanford, he is the US Program Management Head of Planning and Operations. Joe Zorzoli is the Head of the US Government Relations. And Janay Burke is the State Government Relations and Public Affairs Director for the Southeast. And we'll we'll open it up and let the project after when we get through the end of this PowerPoint presentation. UCB is, to give you a little background on their request and about their company. UCB is based out of Belgium. It is the largest pharmaceutical company in the state of Georgia. They have been headquartered here in Smyrna for the last 20 years. Their campus is located pretty much at the intersection of Lake Park Drive, Village Parkway and Wendy Hill. And I have a vicinity map to orientate you guys just a little bit better. And their current campus has about 110,000 square feet of workspace. Their proposed improvement would add an additional 60,000 square feet of office space. Currently, on their campus, they have 400 employees and they are one of Smyrna's largest employers at the moment. Just to give you an idea of where they're located, this is their campus. UCB is proposing a three-phase project. They're proposing the first phase to be a $23.5 million improvement to one of their existing buildings. They would be taking that building, which is sort of an open warehouse space and converting it into quality workspace and office space. After this improvement, that building will be designated as a, will have Wells Certification and LEED Certification. Well, Certification is an office design certification that centers on the health and well-being of the employees. And obviously, the LEED Certification is the environmental design aspect. So this will be the first building in the state of Georgia with both those certifications. This improvement will allow the addition of 100 new employees. The average salary for those employees will be over $100,000. The scheduled start time for this project is early summer and it is expected to run approximately 18 months to completion. Just so you all are aware, we have already begun the plan review process for permitting. I think we have completed our first round of review and given the comments back to the architect and engineers. So we'll be waiting for the second round to come back. Phases two and three will come later and those phases together are expected to be $24 million of improvements. Just to give you an idea of where these improvements are going to be made. It's going to be made at this building that's at the intersection of Wendy Hill and Village Parkway. And then there will be a new parking, small parking lot to accommodate the additional workers up along Wendy Hill. To break down the fee waiver request, they are requesting a waiver of the building permit fees and the records fees. So if we base the estimated cost of construction on the $23.5 million, the building fees come out to $164,000 roughly. And the records fee will be another $15,000 for a total fee waiver request of $180,000 and more or less. The current fair market value of the property is approximately, is just under $40 million. With the proposed improvements, it would jump up to $63 million. The city currently collects for tax revenue, $143,000 in tax revenue every year. The proposed improvements would add $84,000 of additional tax revenue. And the recapture cost on the fee waiver would be 26 months at that point. This slide is basically highlighting where in ordinance where in ordinance we're allowed to request fee waivers and where it's set up. And it basically tells you how our building permit fees are calculated, which is based off of the estimated cost of construction. And it's $7 per thousand dollars estimated cost of construction. And then the records fee is 10% of the estimated building permit fee. With that being said, community development and economic development have both reviewed this request. We feel like it's a good request and benefits the city. We're recommending approval of the waiver of the building permit costs and the records fee. If you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Or if you have specific questions for UCB or regarding their project, I'll let either Scott or Joe or Janay answer those questions for you.
I have a question. So you said it's LEED and what's the other certification? You said this will be the first building in the state that has both. What is the other one called?
It's WELL.
And just a question for the UCB representatives that have joined us. You know, what additional cost do y'all incur in construction to meet those standards for this new addition? And I would guess it's significantly more to build it to those specifications outlined in those two programs than it would be to just build any average building, right? Y'all have any cost data or?
So this is Joe Zorzoli with UCB. I think Scott Sanford, are you on? Can we hear you, Scott?
Hey, Joe, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can. Is this Dwayne?
It is. Hello, everyone. My name's Dwayne Barnes. I'm President and Head of US Operations. I was texting Scott. I'm actually traveling right now, but I wanted to make sure I joined this call. And thank you each and every one of you for having us on and listening to our requests. But Scott is our PMO LEED. He runs and is the Project Manager for all of our in-space projects in the US. And I know that when I texted him probably about 10 minutes ago, he was somehow got kicked off. I don't know if there's a max on here. He was just having problems himself. But he is the guy with the detail that you're asking for, so forgive us for not being able to answer the question.
No, that's okay. I think generally, I was just thinking, you know, it's, in my mind, that's got to be pretty robust outlay of capital to meet those standards and that y'all are willing to do that to put the first building of its kind that meets both of those standards in Smyrna at a time that we're trying to ramp up our environmental stewardship efforts and sustainability stuff. I mean, I'm just pleased that this project is even in front of us right now. So thank you all for bringing it forward to us.
Yeah. So, Dwayne, just so you know, Scott's IMing me right now and he can't, for some reason, the phone won't go unmute. But he was telling me here that it's $75,000 to $100,000 for WELL and LEED costs additional to bill just for the certification fee. So it's quite an investment that UCB is putting forth for these certifications.
Yeah, and our aspiration as a company from a sustainability perspective is to be carbon neutral and net zero by 2030 across the globe. So clearly, with the investment and the willingness for this capital investment in the US, it was, we certainly wanted to lead the way and present an example that would, being the largest, not only the largest facilities, but the largest revenue producers and essentially servicing the most patients in the world is the US. So we wanted to lead in this area as well from a sustainability perspective.
That's great. Any comments, questions from the council?
If you wouldn't mind, may I have a minute for comments?
Please.
No, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you, Mayor Norton, members of the City Council, City Administrator Tammy Sadler Jones, Rusty, all the work that you've done. We really appreciate it. Tom Bowlen and the City Fire Marshal's Office for your leadership in the city of Smyrna and Cobb County. This team has been working on this project for quite some time. I have been a UCB employee for about two years and eight months. And prior to that, I was also, I worked for a company called Amgen in Southern California. So I've been in healthcare for 22 years, but I've been in biotech for about seven years. And I'm very impressed with my team and the team that is working on this project. But the way in which the collaboration and the ability to do this in the city of Smyrna has been a great example and a benchmark for us to use in future expansions and opportunities. But I wanted to say that although Rusty's covered some of the history of UCB and the details of our expansion, I wanted you to just, we're proud of UCB. We're proud of our culture and what we're doing in biotech. But we've been a proud corporate citizen in the city of Smyrna and one of your largest employers for about, or maybe over 20 years. This expansion project itself is going to allow us to continue to grow and retain our operations here in Smyrna for the foreseeable future, which is what we want. And quite frankly, I've done little things since I came in the last couple of years. I've had the team on the site build wellness walking paths and create an environment where people, when they're at work, have the time to take the break and consider ensuring their own wellness, their own balance, and really promoting this sense of sustainability that's necessary in our culture, but also in our community. This really means a lot to us in terms of delivering innovative solutions, this project, for the patients we serve and the people that will continue to be part of something here. We look at Atlanta Metro and Smyrna as an opportunity for recruitment and retention. And it's a little bit unique and this isn't, I got a little bit of notes scripted for me, but this is a little bit off track or off script. It's harder to recruit into Atlanta for biotech than it is into Massachusetts or New York, New Jersey, or California, because people have more choices there if they want to move in their career. So when people come to Smyrna, they've made a commitment to UCB. But I can tell you from an employee engagement perspective, we have very high scores in terms of the way people feel about helpfulness and generosity and the way they're treated and the space and the community and the place we work in has a lot to do with that, but also the culture. And culture has everything to do, sustainability informs culture as well. So these are some of the reasons we've taken and are willing to commit to the steps we've taken. It's been a hard push for our global headquarters to release this sort of capital. And quite frankly, you, most of you wouldn't know this, but we made an acquisition of another gene therapy company in the US, which was the largest capital investment and acquisition the company's made in over 15 years. So all that really tells you is right now, we're not, you know, we have already, there's a bit of a stranglehold on cash, but we have a commitment to continue this project. And so I'm excited about that because I want this to be a little bit of my legacy over the next three years that we can get to and demonstrate what it looks like to have a world-class campus in a community that people love to be in. Cobb County and the area and Smyrna is something that people come from and don't really know that much about it, but when they get here, they embrace it. So it's a little bit of our roots. It's a little bit of what we believe in and what we stand for. You know, our tagline is inspired by patients and driven by science. And the only thing that's not in there is, and driven by the energy of our employees and the engagement of our employees. And I think this campus and what we're doing to it right now will truly enable us to move into the next phase of our development because we have five assets over the next five years, or six assets over the next five to six years that we want to launch and expect to launch. And I don't think you'd be surprised that the launching pad, when we start, when we launch new products, is the US. So the expectation to be able to retain and hire the best and the brightest has a lot to do with culture, but also where people work. So that was a bit of a stream of consciousness, but I hope that gives you a perspective. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have. And thank you for giving us this time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council or staff?
One question, I missed it. Rusty, how many employees are currently there at UCB?
400.
400. Does that make UCB itself one of the largest, the largest private employer in the city now?
Tom, you'd have to answer that.
No, it doesn't make them the largest, but certainly they're one of the largest employers.
Excellent. We definitely, I definitely greatly appreciate UCB's longevity here in the city. And it's the kind of business we'd love to grow and support. So really appreciate your desire to stay here and be part of our, be part of our community. Thank you.
Yes. I would like to say thank you as well. And also, I wanted to ask Rusty if he could share that PowerPoint because I would like to read more of the information that was presented. But I did, you know, I'm very excited about what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could say one point, just reiterate one of the points that Dwayne made. Special thanks to Tom Bowlen and Rusty Martin, Anthony Carter, Tim Grubel. They have been absolutely tremendous to work with in these early stages. And we really look forward to working with the team as we start this project.
Any other questions, comments from council? I can tell you, I'm excited about this project. I think with everything that we're trying to do in the city and the direction that we're moving as far as environmental stewardship. And to be an example, there's nothing like this in the state. I'm very excited and encouraged that y'all are willing to do this here. That says a lot about your commitment to us. And, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward, putting this on an agenda for the next council meeting. Tammy, can we do that for Monday and take a vote? Is that the next step?
Yes, sir. We can do that.
Very good. Any other comments from y'all? Thank you for joining us tonight. Anything else you want to add?
I don't think so. Mayor Norton, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, thank y'all for joining us and y'all have done well to hire Janay Burke. The only downfall, the downside is that she doesn't live in Smyrna, but that's just another opportunity for her, right?
That's right. Yes, absolutely.
Good to see you, Jared.
Thank you, Mayor Norton. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Tammy, what's the next agenda item?
What?
The next agenda item is our finance team is going to present to you the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to Jared Kristen.
Great.
So Jared is going to start the presentation and then, you know, I'll pick up somewhere in the middle. So if you have any questions, just, you know, speak up and let us know. We'll be happy to answer them as we go along.
Yeah, what do you guys see right now? Do you see the, do you see the main screen there?
Yes, FY 2021 budget presentation.
All right, it's flickering on me for some reason, but all right, we'll go with that. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come and sort of introduce the next phase of our budget process. It's something that we started back in November with our capital budgeting and finalized the capital budget in January and then in February, sort of kicked off the operating budget process and asked the departments to submit their budget requests. Administration and Finance met with each of them individually, virtually, of course, and negotiated a little bit. And we have, we've whittled it down to the proposal that you're going to see tonight. We did print budget books for you. They are abbreviated versions. I have not included all of the line item detail. It's really the front half of the budget book. Those are available at City Hall for you to pick up when you can. I will say that you can see the entire budget book and anybody can find it on our website. It's been published to the budget page under the finance section on our city website, smyrnaegov. So it's available in entirety there. And tonight, really, the goal is just to kind of give you an overview. And then at the end of the presentation, we'll give you a feel for what the rest of the budget timeline looks like. I know this is the first go around for some of you as well with the budget. So if at any point something doesn't make sense, you want to ask a question, of course, feel free to do that. So on this slide, you see just a high-level snapshot of our total proposed budget. These are the various funds that make up that budget. And you can see the biggest one there is our general fund at a proposed $53,871,625. The general fund, I mean, it funds the things you typically associate with our local government services, public safety, community development, parks and recreation, finance, HR, those types of things. That makes up the biggest component of it. We also have enterprise funds in there at $22.8 million. The enterprise funds are our water sewer operating fund as well as two capital project funds. The water sewer CIP and the stormwater CIP. We do have sort of a separate category of capital project funds. That includes our general fund CIP, our E911 CIP. And the biggest piece of it is the 2016 SLOSS. Special revenues are in there at $4.2 million. We have a number of different special revenue funds, but probably the two most significant ones are our E911 Center Operations as well as the Hotel Motel Fund. And then our internal service funds, we really just have one. It's the Vehicle Replacement Fund. We call it an internal service fund just because it provides a service to the other departments within the city's organization. And we've got expenses budgeted there at just under $1.3 million. So it adds up to a total proposed budget of $105,915,472. And on most of these slides, I've given you in the bottom right-hand corner there, a page reference to the big budget book. So you should be able to find that for more information if you wanted to make a note and go back and look up any more detail on this. Numbers are good, but it helps to have some context, which is what this slide aims to do. It's giving you a comparison to the prior year. So you see those same groups of funds that we saw on the previous chart. They're here in this table. You see the FY 20 revised budget number. You see the FY 20 proposed budget. And then you see the increase, decrease and percent change there. So I will go briefly through these. The general fund is expected to increase by about $464,000. It's less than 1% above the FY 20 revised budget. Special revenue funds are expected to decrease about $541,000 or 11%. Capital project funds, we see a pretty market increase here of about $9.9 million or 72%. I will tell you that's related to the 2016 SLOSS. We have budgeted for a full year of construction activity along Wendy Hill Road. And with that activity, about a $10 million contribution from Cobb County. So that's really accounting for the increase there from FY 20 to FY 21. Internal service funds are expected to be up $100,000 or 9%. And then enterprise funds, we show a decrease here of about $4.8 million. And that has to do with our water sewer CIP. Earlier in this fiscal year, we amended our FY 20 budget to put about $4.3 million toward water line modifications along Wendy Hill Road. That was a project of at a certain scope that we didn't quite anticipate. And so we needed to put some funds together and those funds came from three different places. We took $2 million from the water sewer renewal and extension account, which you can basically think of as the water sewer CIP reserves. We took $1 million from water sewer operating reserves. And then we shifted about $1.3 million from other water sewer capital projects. And we put them to this, these water line modifications along Wendy Hill Road. So, you know, it's about $4.3 million. It increased our FY 20 revised budget. And that's the reason for the decrease that you see here compared to FY 21.
Jared, can I ask you a question?
Was that a question?
Yeah, on the capital projects fund, back up one slide if you would. On the capital projects fund, you mentioned that 10 million approximately was to come from Cobb County. Is that in addition to the 23682 or is that part of the 23682?
It's included in that number and that's a combined number too with the general fund CIP as well.
Okay, so of that 23, hopefully we'll get 10 million of that reimbursed by Cobb County. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this line compares revenues to expenditures. Again, we've got the same group of funds here. The general fund is required to be balanced. You can see that it is at about $53.9 million revenues matching expenditures. The same is true for our special revenue funds, those balance. Capital project funds were showing expenditures over revenues by about $3 million. over revenues by about $3 million and that is related to our to our SLOST. We are intending to spend in FY 21 more than we bring in. And that's that's really just based on the timing of our receipts that have come in better than we anticipated to this point. And the timing of the the related projects as well. So we'll be borrowing a little bit from the available balance that we've accrued to this point to help pay for our planned expenditures in FY 21. I mentioned our internal services funds. That's our vehicle replacement fund. You see a difference here too in revenues versus expenditures. About $286,000 additional we will put to cash reserves. So I figured I would park here for a minute and just give you a brief explanation about this. Our water sewer fund is funded by two transfers in. One transfer in from the general fund and one transfer in from the water sewer fund. And the amounts of those transfers is 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 basically proportionate to the number of different vehicles that each fund keeps active, right? So the general fund has the biggest piece of that. So they transfer in most of the money to support our vehicle replacements. So what we've done is we've kind of we've projected out for 30 years, the anticipated replacements based on the estimated useful lives of our of our vehicles. And so it gives us a total number and we averaged it out and that gives us an average annual contribution, which is sort of our our benchmark. It's our aim to fund that on the revenue side every year. So from an expenses perspective, it will vary every year, right? Depending on which which vehicles come up to be eligible to be replaced in a given year. Sometimes the the actual cost will be lower than the average annual amount. Sometimes they'll be higher. But the goal here is to bring some consistency, to bring some predictability to our budget process. So instead of having to budget what could be a wildly fluctuating number from year to year, we budget a consistent amount. And in years like this, where we have fewer planned expenditures than revenues, we're able to put aside a little extra money to be used in those years when the expenses are higher than the revenues. I will say that in addition to the average annual contribution, we've also put in an extra $100,000 for what we call emergency funds. Vehicles are tricky. You know, you you think you put a good plan together and then an accident happens or a motor dies or something like that. And inevitably you've got to you've got to replace a vehicle sooner than the departments anticipated replacing a vehicle. So we plan for that by building into the revenues an extra $100,000 for emergency funds. So part of that 286 is $100,000 that will will sort of keep aside and keep active for use in FY 21 as needed. The rest will drop to 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 fund balance and the vehicle replacement fund. And then finally, enterprise funds, we're expecting revenues to exceed expenditures by about $2.2 million. That is the water sewer operating fund. That's that's the piece that's got the transfer to cash reserves. It's $2.2 million in FY 21. We budgeted a transfer of $1.8 million in FY 20. And from the finance perspective, we are comfortable recommending a proposed budget with revenues exceeding expenditures by that amount because we know one thing and that is that infrastructure is expensive. You you really only have to look back at the budget amendment we had to do this year, $4.3 million for waterline modifications along Windy Hill Road to recognize that when projects come up like that and they can come up unexpectedly sometimes in terms of their their scope. It's nice to be able to to tap into your reserves and and use that to be able to keep projects on track and be able to move forward. So in FY 20, we used some of those reserves and FY 21, we're budgeting to put some of them back. So this slide is an overview of our revenues versus expenditures. Now, the next couple of slides. You know, I've I've been doing this for six years, I think. This is my this is my sixth budget and there's always a level of unpredictability when it comes to budgeting. This year is a little bit different. We've got quite a bit of unpredictability in the form of COVID-19 and trying to figure out what the likely impacts might be, both in terms of our operations and in terms of the various revenues that we collect. We're still trying to wrap our heads around what exactly that means for the current the current fiscal year. And and at the same time, we're trying to budget for for next fiscal year. So, you know, we're guessing, but we're trying to 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 be educated about it. And we've been reaching out to our peers. We've been reaching out to other jurisdictions in the metro area, trying to get a feel for what they're thinking about and what what steps they might be taking, what reductions in their revenue they anticipate. And rather than try to get too too particular with any one of these different revenue streams, we've we've just said, look, we don't really know. So we're going to take kind of a blanket cut here. So for these revenue sources that you see on this slide, we are budgeting a 20% reduction in them. And when I say 20%, I I don't necessarily mean 20% lower than what was budgeted in FY 20. I mean, 20% lower than what we would have budgeted in FY 21, had it not been for COVID-19, right? So we're taking a 20% reduction in our title ad valorem tax. Those are the associated with vehicle sales. We're taking a 20% reduction in various revenue streams associated with buying and selling alcohol. Taking 20% for our various parks programs and facility rentals, 20% for hotel motel tax, for auto rental tax and for general business license. This isn't all of the impacts, but those are the ones we're taking a 20% cut to. On this slide, we also want to talk about real property taxes. Of course, we need to look at that because that represents the biggest piece of our general fund revenue. And I should say that as an assumption, we 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 are assuming as we go about this budget process that mayor and council will keep the millage rate at 8.99 mils. That's a separate decision. You guys make that decision separately from the budget decision. But we're assuming that mayor and council will keep it at the same millage rate it's been at since fiscal year 2008. Now, we did learn from the Cobb County Tax Assessor that with their assessment of property values as of January or on January 1st of this year, they're projecting countywide a 5% increase in the overall tax digest. We know in the past several years, past few years at least, that Smyrna has historically, on average, we've done about 2% better than that. So we feel comfortable budgeting a 7% increase to our tax digest. That helps a lot. But we have built in a reduction to our collection rate, assuming that some folks will find it harder to make their property tax payment on a timely basis. So we have reduced that collection rate from what we historically budgeted at 98.5% down to 96.5%. So we've taken 2% off that collection rate and the the net impact where budgeted revenue is about $520,000 off of our what we otherwise would have budgeted for real property tax revenue. And then for the 2016 SLOST, of course, that's based on sales tax revenue. Luckily, for the past three years, our monthly revenues have, on average, been averaging about 19% higher than what we originally built our SLOST budget on. That's the good news. So going forward then and kind of in line with those 20% cuts we were making elsewhere, we've said, hey, in this budget, we're gonna we're just going to use the original projection, right? So we've been trending 19% higher. Instead of budgeting that higher number, we're budgeting the original projection. So this next slide summarizes.
Can I ask a quick question, Jared? Sorry. Just real quick, before we get too deep in, a quick question about the 20% reduction in key revenues. You said you reached out to other agencies or other cities or whatnot. Is it just for ballpark sense? Is that a conservative estimate? Is that kind of generally what other people are are sort of averaging to if they're maybe being more specific about different revenue streams or you know, where where in the ballpark is that roughly?
I I think it's I think it's I think it's fairly in the middle, in the in the general sense that I think we're getting is that governments are are not thinking worst case scenario, but they are trying to be pretty conservative. In additionally, they are thinking that this, you know, we could see impacts, not not just in this next fiscal year, but maybe extending for for a little while longer, right? So this may have a multi-year impact. I I was on a call just this afternoon with the Georgia Municipal Association. They were kind of giving us a feel for that. They had a panel of three other city managers across the state and and I feel like a 20% cut is is pretty on par with what other places are thinking about.
So Jared, before you move on on this slide here, you said the collection rate is reduced from 98.5% to 96.5% on the tax digest. Can you you said an amount. What was that amount again? That you you kind of guessing, I guess?
Reducing reducing that collection rate by two percentage points has affected about $520,000 in terms of our budgeted revenues.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Your question, Louis. I think that Jared mentioned he was on that call and I think that Tammy was on a call with the other city managers a couple of weeks ago, talking to them about what they were looking at. And I also reached out to all of the finance directors of the other cities in Cobb and then a couple of my colleagues in other cities as well to kind of get their thoughts. And some of them are actually taking a bigger chunk out of this, but you know, Jared and I looked at this a lot and we think we feel pretty good about these numbers and we're hoping that, you know, they end up a little better than this. So it's kind of somewhere in the like, like Jared said, it's not worst case scenario, but it's kind of, you know, a little bit optimistic and hoping that things turn around early in the fiscal year.
A question for you on the collection rate from 98.5 to 96.5. And thanks, Chris. I appreciate that insight on how you're looking at it. But for that collection rate, is that similar to what other cities are predicting also?
Yes. So so on that call that Tammy was on, the other city managers had said that. And then I spoke with with Cobb County, with Bill Volklan over there, their finance director, and he said that they were taking a 2% cut off of their collection rate. I I talked to one city and I feel like they were a little aggressive. They were taking an eight point reduction. And then their council was actually considering raising taxes. So I thought that was a unique approach. For the most part, everybody was doing a 2% to 3% reduction from their prior year collection rate.
And Tim, I was on the phone with the other city managers here in Cobb and that was kind of the consensus among those city managers as well.
So then what if we're hopefully we're right? And what if we're wrong? What if we're off by? If it's you said 500,000 bucks for 2%, right? So if we're off by another, say, 4%, right? So another million bucks.
So a couple of things on that. Our due date is in November and so we usually have we get our our big payments in from the mortgage companies in middle of October, usually end of October. And so by that timeframe, we usually have a pretty good idea of what our collection is going to look like. And so we do not give authorization to the departments to move forward with capital projects and also on vehicles. We don't do anything with that until after November to make sure that we've actually collected what we anticipate. So if collections were down and we were several hundred thousand dollars under, we would potentially look at some of the capital projects that are proposed in this budget to be adopted and, you know, maybe move those around. Also, there is money in this budget for salary salary related thing effective January 1. And so there are some room there and that's why we wait after tax collections before we go make any big purchases and you know, use those funds before they've actually come in. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Yep, thank you.
Are they ready?
All right. So moving on, this slide kind of summarizes those those various impacts. In the general fund, we've we've budgeted what could be considered a revenue loss of $1.8 million. That's inclusive of that $520,000 for real property tax revenue that we talked about. Budgeted revenue loss of $327,000 in hotel motel fund and a $1.7 million loss in the 2016 SLOST fund. We've already talked about how SLOST will expect to spend more than it brings in in FY 21. But as we mentioned, they've got we've got sufficient funds to to meet those expenditures next fiscal year. We are planning on the use of cash reserves, both in the general fund and the hotel motel fund. Our budget includes the use of $500,000 from general fund reserves and it includes the use of $134,000 from the hotel motel reserves. So again, those are different funds. They're different pots of money. They're different reserves. We are planning to tap both of those to help balance the respective budgets.
Can you go back to that slide? Is that 500K? Is that for the for the 2020 budget or the 2021?
2021.
The 20, both of these, and the hotel motel, 134,000 is for 2021. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Jared, up above a few minutes ago, we under the revenues versus expenditures slide, we talked about a $598,917 use of reserve funds or deficit. It is is that what this is, this money is used towards to cover that deficit?
So you're talking about this number at the bottom here.
Right.
Numbers quirky, these two numbers are being used. The 500,000 is in that general fund revenues number. And the number for hotel motel is in the special revenue funds revenues number. So we're we're using those as revenue sources to balance the budgets for the general fund and for the hotel motel fund, which is captured in special revenue.
Okay, so essentially, are we using those reserves in addition to this 598,000?
Yes. Yes.
So what you're telling me is we're really a million, too, pulling out of our reserves. Is that correct?
Well, for the general fund, only 500,000. So but overall, budget wide, yes, we're using money that we've collected, but the biggest part of that is the capital projects fund and that was sort of designed that way. I mean, we've been collecting money in anticipation of, you know, large projects starting. So, yeah.
I concur with that. I don't have any problem with that. I know that, you know, that's that's the nature of that beast. Because of Windy Hill and so forth, we've been pushing, we've been putting money aside to be able to do it and we're gonna we're gonna pull money from it, but that so the let's go back down to the other slide, if you don't mind. So really, the the cash reserves that we're we're pulling out of of our reserve fund is 634,000. Is that? Is that what you're telling me?
I wouldn't think of it that way because they're they're two different pots. I mean, the 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 money that's received into the hotel motel fund comes from the hotel motel tax.
Okay.
It's set aside for hotel motel. It's set aside for hotel motel operations. So in total, yes, the number is right, but in this case, I think you have to think of them separately.
Okay, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but I mean, I'm, I'm, gosh, I guess I'm too conservative, but I, I hate not to present a balanced budget is I guess my, my real heartburn. But I understand the, with the, with the SPOLOST, that's, that's a little bit of a misnomer, so, okay.
Yeah, you're required.
Corky, this year, there's just, there are so many variables right now, you know, that we're, that we're trying to guess and figure out. And like we said in the budget committee meetings, you know, the, the raises and all of the merit increases, things like that deferred to January that we can reevaluate at a time. I think a lot of this budget is subject to reevaluation depending on what the, what the circumstances are and what we're looking at, you know, as we react to what we're, what we're presented with in front of us. So this is just, you know, this is the best guess by these, by these very talented staff at, at this time. And we'll, we'll adjust as we need to going forward.
I understand, I just want to make sure I understand what, what we're doing. That's, that's all I'm asking.
Right, and just, you said that, you mentioned the balanced budget. And Corky, for like, according to, you know, all the, the budget law, for lack of a better term, the general fund has to be balanced budget. And so that's why on that previous slide, you didn't see anything. Because to balance the budget, this use of reserves is actually a revenue line item. And that makes it balanced presentation.
Before we move from this slide to, I have a question about the hotel motel fund. And you're saying it's, it's going to be used in cash reserves. I guess, are, are there restrictions on the, how that money can be used in the hotel motel?
Yes, there's a, yeah, it's, it's, there's a portion of it that, you know, by statute, I guess, comes into the general fund. But all the money that's in the hotel motel has to be used for travel and tourism related activities. So it is separated, just like all the other special, special revenue funds that we have, they're set up for a very specific revenue stream. And the, the revenue can only be used for the purposes set up for that fund. So that's like 911 and everything else. Does that answer your question, Susan?
Yes, but, okay, but it being moved into the cash reserves, it's still going to be used in those areas for hotel motel?
Yeah, it's, it's, we're using the reserves of that fund. It's not in the general fund, it's actually in that fund.
Okay, thank you.
Corky, since you, you asked the question about this slide, it shows this balance, right? But the, the reality is we're using money from reserves for the general fund and for the hotel motel fund. I will point out that on page 11 of the budget book, it, it is the, the big sort of summary table of our revenues versus expenditures. And it shows it just like this, the general fund being, being balanced. But at the bottom of that page, we've got a note that says the general fund has been balanced using 500,000 from reserves. So we tried to be kind of transparent there on, on the face of things that even though it shows balanced, there's a note at the bottom that says we're, we're using money from reserves to help cover that. And now that I look at it, I could probably go ahead and put a second note in there that says the same thing about hotel motel fund reserves as well.
And just for further clarification, in the, the memo that starts the budget book, the, the overview that kind of hits all the hot points, that is very clearly spelled out in that memo that we are using reserves to, to balance those funds.
So I, I wanted to just give you a little bit of a better feel for some, some of the specific revenue sources, what we're budgeting this year compared to what we budgeted in the prior year. I'll be quick with this unless there's something that you really want to dive in on. Real property tax, you see an increase here of $869,000. Again, these are budgeted numbers FY20 to FY21. And although we are anticipating a, you know, a cut in the collection rate, that overall increase in our tax digest will still give us a positive increase, we think, on our property tax revenue that's reflected here. Sanitation charges, we show a negative amount here, but keep in mind, these are, this is based on a comparison to the prior year budget. In FY20, we're actually tracking a little bit underneath our budgeted amount for sanitation charges. So virtually, what we're seeing here is there's, there's basically no difference in what we're expecting to bring in from sanitation. Insurance premium taxes, the tax on premiums, ball insurers with policies in the city, that's, that's been doing pretty well for the past several years. We put in a small increase there. And then for the next three there, you see basically no difference. Franchise taxes, intergovernmental revenues with Cobb County, the transfer from the water sewer fund to the general fund to sort of reimburse it for activities that the general fund does for it. Those are all basically the same. I talked about general business license being affected likely by COVID. You see the decrease here of about a quarter million dollars. Municipal court fines, we're saying are going to be up a little bit. We, we are anticipating that we'll have three new traffic enforcement units that will be implemented in FY21, hopefully making our streets a little bit safer. And then secondarily, bringing in a little bit of extra revenue for the city. And then title add velourum tax, this one's a little bit tricky because we, I mentioned that it is going to be taking a hit from COVID-19 impacts, but you see an increase here, right, of $590,000. And basically, the explanation there is that we, we feared last year at this time that due to changes at the state level associated with the collection and distribution of those revenues, we feared a pretty significant negative hit to our budget. I'm happy to say that based on seven months worth of data, it doesn't look like we're going to experience that hit due to changes in the allocation and distribution of funds. So those revenues, they lag behind a couple of months. We don't have nine months of data to work with, we've got seven months. But based on that seven months, if you sort of annualize it out, pre-COVID-19, we might have hit about $1.7 million in FY20. So compared to that, in FY21, a budget of 1.3 million is, comparatively speaking, it's, it's down, right? Any questions about any of those? That's the water sewer, those, these are the top revenues in the water sewer, excuse me, in the general fund. This next slide does the same thing. It looks at some of our key revenues for the various other funds. The top one, the top table there is for our water sewer fund. And you see the three main revenues there, water usage charges, sewer usage charges, and then the base rate. We do, as a matter of practice, automatically pass through the rate increases that the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority imposes on the wholesale purchase of, of water from them. So we pass along automatically those increases to our retail customers. And that increase, the past three years, has been 2%. We don't know at this point exactly what that increase will be. They kind of wait until the last minute, I think we'll find out later in the calendar year. This budget does anticipate an increase effective January. And you see that kind of reflected in these budget numbers. We're also tracking a little bit better this fiscal year than budgeted. So that's kind of the reason for maybe the bigger percent change year over year here. Stormwater fees, we expect to be up $100,000 or 8%. This, like the water sewer fees, we have built in a budget, an increase to the monthly fee that would become effective in January. So we've built into the budget a seven cent or approximately a 2% increase. The monthly fee now is $3.45 for residents, that would go up to $3.52. For a little bit of context, we, we implemented bigger increases over the last three years. We implemented a 50 cent increase that was effective January of 2018. And we implemented a second 50 cent increase that was effective just this past January. So that was kind of a, you know, that, that kind of righted the ship, so to speak. That got our revenues to a point where they're going to be at a level that allows us to meet our capital obligations. And so going forward, a smaller annual increase of about 2% doesn't add a whole lot more to our budget each year, but we think that it will be sufficient to allow us to meet our capital project obligations over the next five years or so. So as of today, where we stand is anticipate going forward about a 2% increase over the next few years in the stormwater fee. Again, that would be effective in January. Our E911 fees are collected by the telecommunications providers and remitted to us. They fund our E911 center operations. Over the past one to two years, our, our Smyrna team has also taken on new business. They are now providing 911 services to the city of Powder Springs. That has brought on some additional expenses, but it's also brought on some additional revenues as well. And I will say, there's been some uncertainty, again, with changes at the state level in terms of collecting and distributing these funds. There's been a little bit of uncertainty the past couple of years with this revenue source. But at this point, we're comfortable budgeting amount, an amount that is a little bit higher than what we budgeted last year. Now historically, the E911 fund has not been self-sustaining. And what we mean by that is that those E911 fees have not been quite enough to fully fund 911 center operations. So what we've needed traditionally is a transfer in, a subsidy from the general fund. And this chart shows you that the revised budget for 20 was $330,000. We're expecting that to be $283,000, about $47,000 less. So what that chart kind of shows you is due to the additional revenues the 911 centers bringing in, we're able to pretty much on a one-to-one basis, decrease that transfer from the general fund. So that's good. And then finally, on this page, it's, it's the hotel motel fund. And I've already mentioned, we're expecting decreases here. We are showing those decreases for the hotel motel tax and the auto rental tax. And again, those differences and that percentage change there is based on what we budgeted for the current year. Along with the budget book, every year, the mayor and council also adopt a new schedule of fees and charges. It is included in the budget book, it's included in the printed copies of the budget that you have access to. I will not be going through all of these in this presentation in the interest of time. I will just refer you to the budget book, page 25. And I will point out that because they affect the most people, probably the most significant ones here are the water sewer utility and the stormwater utility. And I already mentioned in a previous slide how we do expect some increases to the rates for both of those effective in January. I've got two more slides and then I'm going to hand it off to Kristen. We just wanted to give you a little bit of a feel for what's in the budget, right? Like, what are we talking about? What goes into, what goes into the big number? And these are just a few select things that we thought would be noteworthy and worthy of mentioning. We have a $497,000 contingency in our general fund. That's inclusive of $310,000 set aside for merit raises. Now, historically, traditionally, the past several years, we have, we've done this. We've put money set aside in contingency for those merit raises that have varied based on the annual performance reviews of our employees. They vary between 0% and 3.5%. And we have made them effective and we budgeted them to be effective as of January. We budgeted them for a half year for a couple of reasons. Number one, it, it costs us less money when we're budgeting. But number two, it also gives us six months of, of a real world experience, right? We get to be six months down the road and then make a judgment call about whether or not we're in a position to go ahead and award these merit increases to our staff. So putting these in the budget, putting them in contingency, it shows that it is our intention, it is our desire to be able to do this for our employees. It is not a commitment though. Probably sometime in, in November, December, you guys will get back together, mayor and council, and decide at that point whether or not we'll have merit raises, whether or not you want to use these funds set aside for that purpose. But for now, they're in there in the general fund contingency along with 187,000 of unallocated dollars in contingency. We've also got an increase to our health insurance that totals almost $500,000. Health insurance is notoriously hard to predict. It varies quite a bit and the fourth quarter especially sees a lot of variability year to year. And typically, it's more expensive than, than we have budgeted. For a little bit of context, in FY19, we spent $6.2 million. For now, in FY20, our, our best guess at this point is that we will finish the year at about $5.8 million, which is less than we spent in FY19, but it's still $300,000 more than we budgeted in FY20. So for FY21, we've kind of split the difference and we've put it at a flat $6 million, which is an increase of about $500,000 over what we budgeted in FY20. The general fund absorbs most of that, 90% of that. And then smaller percentages are allocated out to water sewer, hotel, motel, and E911. And then some other things in the budget here, we've got $185,000 for traffic signal optimization. That's something that residents, we routinely hear from residents is something they would like us to do. We've done it before, I think, but it's been a few years. Of course, that won't solve all of our traffic woes, but we expect it will be advantageous. And for now, we've built in $185,000 to be able to do that in FY21. We've got $46,000 for repairs to the fountain and the arbor right outside of City Hall and Market Village. $40,000 for a class and compensation study that will allow our HR department to conduct a study looking at our positions, looking at our salary grades and looking at them in comparison with the metro Atlanta market and seeing how we stack up and seeing what adjustments, if any, we need to make. As I understand it, the last compensation, class and compensation study we did was in FY18 and it was implemented in FY19. So if we conduct this study in FY21 and make it effective, perhaps in FY22, any changes that need to be made. And we basically got a three-year gap there between those studies, which seems appropriate from our perspective. And then we've got $40,000 for a new fat soils and grease program that's in the waters distribution division. It's a new program to inspect commercial grease traps throughout the city and ensure compliance with EPA regulations. My last slide here is $38,000 for police officer retention bonuses. It also, I will say, includes a, a little bit there for hiring bonuses. But it is the department's intention to phase out the hiring bonuses component. There are a few recruits in the pipeline that will still get the hiring bonus, but going forward, it will be retention bonuses only. And Kristen will talk later about some other things we're doing to try to attract and retain our public safety personnel. We've got $37,000 approximately for a new culture and spirit community event. It's budgeted in the hotel motel fund. We've got $18,000 for new exercise equipment at the Wolf Center. That's something Parks and Recreation has budgeted for a couple of years now. So they continue to refresh the equipment over there at the Adult Recreation Center. We've got $1,000 for miscellaneous public art projects. This is our second year of budgeting for that. That's coming as a result of some of the public input we've got from folks who want to see more public art in Smyrna. So we've made a point of budgeting for that the past two years. We've got $10,000 for more frequent playground cleaning. Of course, the Parks Maintenance Division does clean our playgrounds and I think they do a good job of it. But this is just acknowledging that post-COVID-19, kind of our new normal going But this is just acknowledging that post COVID nineteen, kind of our new normal going forward, we anticipate there will be an expectation for a higher standard, a higher level of cleanliness uh throughout our playgrounds. And so this puts a little bit extra extra money towards uh the supplies necessary to accomplish that. And then finally, uh last thing of note that we'll mention here is ten thousand dollars for an LED lighting retrofit at the library. This will replace incandescent bulbs that our library director says have been growing more dim over the past few years and has been the subject of some complaints among the patrons of the library. So hopefully, this will provide better lighting and a more efficient uh solution from an energy standpoint. Any questions about any of those items?
Uh yeah, I I've got a couple of questions. Can you back up to the previous slide? Uh you said of the four hundred ninety thousand, or excuse me, four ninety seven general contingency fund. What was the amount that was um put in there for uh potential merit raises?
We're estimating about three hundred and ten.
That's what I thought. Um and is is Frank on the line? Frank Martin?
Yes, sir. He is, yeah.
All right, and Frank, the do you recall when the last time we did this signal optimization was?
Uh no, sir, but I think Kevin might. No, he's on the line. He was on the line.
All right, and the second part of that question is, I want to make sure this is a the hundred and eighty five thousand is for the optimization, not just a study to determine what needs to be done. Can we all answer that or get me? You don't have to. If you can't answer it tonight, get me the answer to it, I guess, is the question.
Yes, sir.
Hey Corky, this is Kevin.
Yes.
Um I don't know the exact timeframe for the last study. I know it was done before the the John Quill Publix went online. So whenever that timeframe was, so it's definitely time to do it again. And but the cost that we're estimating is for the study and for the implementation of the findings from the study.
Okay, so it it is, it's both parts then, okay? Uh now, let's go back to the second slide, if I would. The thirty seven thousand for the new culture and spirit community event. Weren't we um where where did we pull the money from last year for the Black Heritage Festival?
Some of it came. I was gonna say, um we're, we collect money um from uh Gas South. And um I guess last year, um council decided that that money was gonna go into a a special donations account. And so it's been accumulating. And so um the majority of that event was paid for um with money in that account. That account's also used for like the census and for um some other other things that um the Citizens Academy and other things like that.
And the youth council.
I guess, yeah, the youth council as well. I guess since you're, we've got a separate line item now for this culture and spirit community event. There's, there's not enough money in that in that line item to cover this event as well, then. Is that a fair statement?
This is a new event with a different focus. It has a tourism draw to it, so it would be coming out of um Hotel Motel.
Okay.
I had a related question um to Corky's question about the culture and spirit budgeting. That that is just for that one singular event. Um it does not include um uh sort of as a catchall uh kind of thing, including possibly the Black History Month event as well? Or is that a separate uh budget item somewhere in the in the bundle?
Uh the the Black History Month is not in the Hotel Motel um budget. This Culture and Spirit is one event. Uh the thirty seven thousand is a starting. We're not really sure because it's a new event, how much it's really gonna cost or how little it'll cost. There could be some whittling down. Also, we have to keep in mind that as we're rolling in through the COVID season, um we're gonna have some adjustments. And um a lot of those could impact the actual event in October, too, so.
I just want to understand, um so the that thirty seven thousand is from the Hotel Motel for this new cultural and and spirit community event. The other things that were being funded, are they still gonna be funded? Like the, I think there was like three things, like maybe the Black uh History Festival and the academy, uh the uh high school. Um it seems like Citizens Academy or something like that. There was three things that I remember were funded. Will they still be funded or is this a change?
No, we expect for those to still be funded out of the uh Gas South funds.
Okay, so so the funded out of the Gas South, this and.
In order to get this thirty seven thousand into the Hotel Motel budget for this new event, I did make cuts in other places. So it's not just a a a fresh new thirty seven thousand dollars on top of everything.
I guess my my biggest question was, it there is, there is not enough money in that gas fund to put this thirty seven thousand or to take it from that fund. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah. There is um off the top of my head, I think there's around a thousand dollars that's going into that fund on a monthly basis. I'll check that, but it, so yeah, there's not enough money in that fund to to do this.
Okay, that that's what I wanted.
So I have another question. Um when y'all uh we're talking about the thirty eight thousand for police officer retention bonuses, you mentioned that you, there was another portion that you had taken out. What was that again?
Um I was just saying that inclusive in that thirty eight thousand dollars, there there is some uh portion of that for hiring bonuses. So we've got a a handful of recruits in the pipeline and they will be eligible for the hiring bonuses. But they will be the last ones.
Okay, okay, they'll end after that for the hiring bonuses, the ones that are in the pipeline. Okay, thank you.
Ready to move forward?
Oh, hey, I got a question. Um if I could, question about uh one of our top topics these days is sidewalks and pedestrian safety. So um I I noticed it wasn't highlighted in the noteworthy areas, but could Frank or Kevin reflect on where we stand for budgets for next year in those areas?
I will say, I will say um it's, we still have money in there. Um so if you know off the top of your head, uh Kevin, what you budgeted, you can advise, but we did leave that line item in there.
Is it same, bigger, I mean, just relative, you know, whatever you added to it, kept it the same? Uh the sidewalks are in Frank's budget.
Tim, uh I get fifty thousand in sploths uh this year. And then we put uh we'll always have a little bit in drainage that would can be tied in the sidewalk. But the other, uh if I understand, the sidewalk uh the pinpoint sidewalks that I asked for for Ward five in your ward was uh taken out, the way I understand it.
Yeah, I was gonna say they were, um that's um, there were two specific sidewalks that were um in your ward and also in Susan's ward that were included in the budget. And um we discussed that we were gonna remove those at, um I believe our last budget committee meeting. It might have been the the one before that, but we discussed taking those out. And um I think combined those, the request was three fifty or three eighty, something like that. Um and so those were removed from the budget in an attempt to um try to get to a balanced budget.
So I was.
Yep.
The forty thousand dollar line item in Kevin's budget for project striping, crosswalks, center line and miscellaneous, that that's still in there.
Except that maybe, you know, we guys are working hard on this, but that might be something we wanna wanna uh just circle back on, cuz it's it's the number one item we get, particularly around schools. And we're gonna have a lot more to do around Campbell High School, probably, probably next year, you know? Um but um, you know, I mean, it, you know, if it ties into a safety issue with uh with pedestrians and students and families, and it's something we should could consider uh making sure we have more than more than enough in that area.
I would like to add um also, cuz I heard uh that as well. There's been a um a need for a sidewalk on Belmont Circle. That's uh actually between Ward three and Ward seven. It's been something that's been communicated to me um since I've been on the council for eight years. And uh that was one of the areas that I understood was in the budget that was removed. But um it, with the Windy Hill project, there will be some area of that Belmont Circle that will have some sidewalks going in that direction. But there's uh an area there there that it really needs to be more complete because that is a um a road that's uh, you know, it's used quite often to cut through from Atlanta Road to uh Windy Hill. And it, I I believe it'll still be used um even with the addition of of the Windy Hill Road Boulevard because of the uh of the people avoiding the intersection. Um I also was contacted by two residents uh day before yesterday in the area and they told me there was a a pedestrian accident um there on uh on in that area where I'm talking about, on Belmont Circle. Um I just feel like it's something that I've been um, you know, talking about a long time and and it's very, very important. So I just wanna bring that up and uh hope that we can uh find a way to continue doing some of these sidewalk projects. That's not the only need there, but that is definitely a very um very important one in that area.
Susan, Susan, uh Frank and I have been speaking over the last couple of days that we've located some CDBG dollars. And um we're hoping that we're gonna get the Belmont Circle sidewalk connection between Woodland Trail and Turner Drive and the old Concord Road sidewalk design between Windy Hill and uh Concord. Uh we're, that's in the making. We're working on getting those repaired. So you'll be happy to know that.
Uh, thank you.
But we gotta get, we gotta get the CDBG approval first. So if when, if they approve those, then we can use those funds. But did you get the approval yet, Mary?
Well, we've got the dollars sitting there and they're gonna do a governmental review and uh get back with it. It's looking good, Susan. Let's cross our fingers.
What what are the locations that you just mentioned, Mary?
We can send that to you after the meeting if you want us to.
Okay, great, thank you.
You bet.
Kristen, do you wanna take over here?
Yes, I will. All right, so um as you can see on this slide, our total debt obligations are sixty six million, six sixty one, seven sixty eight. Um we added to this total in the current year. Um as y'all remember, in uh November, we refinanced our TAD that we had through Halpern and that now is financed through Vining's Bank. Um that bond issue was twelve million, seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And in the current fiscal year that we're budgeting for twenty twenty one, um five hundred and forty one thousand, four sixty eight is um the the payment for that TAD fund. You will see in the budget book um that we are planning to fund um about one, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um so our TAD bond schedule is set up where we pay um a hundred thousand dollars of principal and then we pay interest. And so that enables us to, if we, something happens with um the the houses and the the houses and the the tax assessments, we don't have to come up with all that money. But it also enables us, when we have good collections, that we can pay down on those bonds to pay them off earlier than anticipated. The initial payoff of those bonds is in twenty forty. Um and so then that's based on the hundred thousand dollars a year and the um the the interest payments. We budgeted, like I said, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that amount. Eight hundred and ninety five thousand is Smyrna's portion. And the eight fifty five um is the portion that comes from Cobb County. So Cobb County collects their taxes and then once they've got all their taxes in, they send us a check and that's usually in January. And then this bond payment is due in February, um much like all of our other bonds. So that's a a new addition in in um to the bonds. Everything else on the bonds has may, has remained unchanged. Um there's going to be, as you can see on the slide, about a four million dollar um transfer from the general fund to pay those bonds. We're also gonna use a hundred thousand dollars from our previously committed funds. Several years ago, council set aside money in the general fund as a commitment of fund balance to help with future debt obligations. Over the last couple of years, we have been using a hundred thousand of that each year to um just to contribute a little bit to um lessen the amount coming from the general fund. Um also included in our debt obligations this year is um two hundred and thirty seven thousand, five thirty eight um for the interest on our uh splosh related bonds, the Windy Hill bonds that were issued. Um and that comes from Title Aborum Tax. That used to be collected into the splosh fund. And um with changes and how that is uh collected and how that's broken down, there's no longer a splosted amount that is um just going to the splosh fund. All of the amount from PBAT is coming into the general fund. And so uh two hundred and thirty seven thousand, five thirty eight is going to be the amount that's due on those Windy Hill bonds. And then we also have our um first our first payment on our Windy Hill splosh bonds, which is, um as you can see, seven point six million dollars.
Kristen, remind me, that fund that the previous council did to help pay for bond debt, what, how mu- what's that balance, the previously committed funds?
Um, hold on a second. I think the round, it's in the budget book, it's around four over a million dollars in one second.
I mean, I read my budget book, but I, that one detail, I must have skipped over.
There's so much. How you would skip over that.
I should one point three.
One point three?
Yes. Okay, thank you, thank you.
So um Kristen, the bonds were taken out for the Windy Hill. Can you explain what that was for exactly? Why was the bonds taken out?
Yes, so um a decision was made by um previous council that it was in the best interest of everyone to go ahead and take out bonds and upfront purchase the right of way on Windy Hill. Um if if we had waited for splosh collections to come in, we we would still be in, we would still be buying right of way and would not have been able to move forward as quickly with the project as as we are. And so um we decided that we were gonna go ahead and get um well over fifteen million dollars worth of bonds to go ahead and kickstart the acquisition process for all the right of way. And so this is the first of two payments that are that are due on those bonds. We have this payment in twenty twenty one and then we have the second installment in twenty twenty two. Did I answer your question?
Yes, and that's called the T A V T bonds? Is that what you're, the?
No, the, no, so the um, so the the bonds are the twenty sixteen Windy Hill bonds. But we, so it was okay, it was, um someone, anybody else wants to weigh on this? Um Scott can weigh in on this if he wants to. But we, we were able to use splosh dollars for splosh for, you know, for the Windy Hill Road for the right of way acquisition. And so we were, we were able to to pay the bonds back with splosh dollars because if we didn't have the bonds, we would be using our splosh dollars to pay for the acquisition. But the interest amount cannot come from splosh collections because it was not, you know, part of the, on the ballot and part of the referendum. And so we had to pay for the um the interest on those bonds with non splosh dollars. And the Title Aborum is a non splosh item. And so that is what has been uh paying the interest on those bonds for the last couple of years and what we'll continue to pay them um this year and next year. and what we'll continue to pay them this year and next year. That makes sense.
Somewhat. Thank you.
Hey, Kristin, I think I got it now that I stared at the slide long enough. But so right now, make sure I got it. We got $66 million of outstanding bond debt. Is that right?
Yes.
And then this year, we're going to pay off 12.4 million of that?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
That's right.
And then...
And the basic portion of that 12 is the 7.6 for SPOSS.
Gotcha. Okay. And then underneath the $66 million, we have new 2019 series to fulfill TAD obligations. So that's new bonds that we took out to fulfill the TAD obligations?
Refinance.
We refinanced them. So we...
Kristin, how much did that save? When you said it was 2040, and if I remember correctly with the presentation from Gordon, it ended up being, it took several years off of it. What was our estimated, I'm trying to remember what our estimated savings was by doing that?
I'd have to go back. I don't remember off the top of my head.
It was a bundle. It was a bundle, though.
We went and we were, those, that, the prior obligations that were through Halpern, we had a 7% interest rate on those. And so I think everybody can agree that that was way too much interest. We were paying $800,000 a year towards interest only. And so we were not really paying down the debt with Halpern. Most of our collections were going to pay the interest that had accumulated on those bonds versus actually paying them down. So I'd have to go back and look. I know we were at 7%. I think this bond offering was 3% or 4%. I'd have to go back and look. I don't have that off the top of my head.
But just for context, Tim, that's why we did what we did, to save that money.
I missed that page in the budget book when I was reading it last night.
Yeah, I figured you might have.
Yeah.
So when we did that bond for Windy Hill to purchase the property, where I guess I'm trying to, I sort of recall that we also had started doing work on Spring Road because we had heard that the Braves Stadium was being built, and that was when we found out about that. So there was some bond, I think where there was some money that was spent there to redo that portion of...
That was out of the SPOSS.
Yeah, that was out of the SPOSS. These, this, these bonds for the SPOSS were all SPOSS land acquisitions because how we did that is every time we had an acquisition for a right-of-way, we had to get documentation of the price of that, and then I had to send a notification to the bank with proof of the right-of-way acquisition to draw down funds to be able to pay on those bonds. And so those bonds were not used for anything except for Windy Hill right-of-way acquisition.
Oh, yeah, that's, I knew that. I just meant in terms of the SPOSS dollars that were spent, you know, over there on, I guess, the SPOSS dollars that started coming in, I think we used those for Spring Road.
I think we, and I saw Greg tell you on here, I think that we were using the, we were kind of, we're still using some of our 2011 SPOSS for the Spring Road project.
I think that's right, Kristin.
Yeah, yeah. Because we still have, we still have a couple of issues over on Spring Road that were, the 2011 SPOSS is still, you know, have an obligation to pay those depending on, you know, what happens with those. So I believe all that was out of our 2011 SPOSS and not out of the 2016 SPOSS.
Okay, thank you. Thing I guess I'm curious about now, do we have a figure that we, in terms of what we have spent on the acquisition of property on Windy Hill Road?
We do have a figure, and I'm going, I know Greg's on here. He probably has a better figure. But I think related to our acquisitions, we're probably in the, we're probably in the $20 million range on acquisitions.
Kristin, that's about where we expect to be, where I think we're sitting about $15, $16 million actually spent right now. But with some of the acquisitions that are in process, we expect to be around 20 at the end.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions about debt? Okay. Okay, so now we'll talk about capital projects. And as you can see, capital projects, well, first of all, I'll start by saying that we present a five-year schedule for consideration of council. We only adopt the current year. And so we don't adopt all five years. We just adopt the current year for fiscal 2021 in this current budget. So you can see, the general fund has got $1,407,950. That is the projects for this year. That detail will be in a future slide, so I'm going to hold off on talking too much about that on this slide. 911, you can see there's nothing in the current year, but then we have funds in '22 and '23. The funds in 2022 are for an upgrade to the 911 system. And then in 2023, it's some furniture upgrades and replacements for the 911 center. Next line down is water and sewer. And Jared talked about this a little bit earlier. This amount includes four projects that are pretty much budgeted every year. The infrastructure improvements, which is kind of an open-ended project. Drainage improvements, it's the same thing. It's just, you know, for whatever Frank and his team, you know, deem necessary to do. It's not project-specific. We also have a water meter and valve program that we started several years ago, back about 15 years ago. Hold on, just lost the PowerPoint. Thank you. So back a couple of years ago, we, I guess about 15 years ago, we paid, we entered an agreement with Johnson Controls, and a big portion of that agreement was the replacement of all of our meters citywide. And so we replaced 15,000 or so meters all at once. And those meters have obviously started to fail because their shelf life is about that, at about, you know, 10 or 15 years. And so we decided a couple of years ago that instead of entering into another agreement like that and that we were just going to budget and use our cash to fund that project, and we were going to replace those meters over a five-year time period. And so then they would be spread out a little bit, so they all wouldn't be dying on it. The battery life wouldn't go out all at once. And so what the plan is, is that we replace those over five years. And then there's a 10-year cycle where we're not replacing any meters, and then we start back up and go on the same track to replace the meters because the battery life of those is supposed to be about 15 years. So included in fiscal 2021 is a continuation of that project that's been budgeted for a couple of years. We also have additional funds in there for fire line meter installations, which was a new item that was added last year. And there's a continuation of that over the next couple of fiscal years. And then the last one here is stormwater. And there's not any specific projects that we have for stormwater. We budget the entire amount of collections as an expenditure in capital projects. And then based upon the needs of the city, Frank and his team spend those funds down as well. Any questions about any of that?
Yes, you mentioned several things that were part of that water sewer. Did you say fire lines or something like that?
There's fire line meter installations. And what that is, is it allows there to be a meter on the fire line in these commercial buildings and in apartment complexes. And so it allows us to gauge the water flow of, in the event that those fire lines are used. It also helps us, it helps control the water supply and like potable water and some other things like that. Not an expert on all that. I see Frank turn on his mic.
It also fulfills an EPD regulation.
I was about to say that. I remember that from the audit that we had. So that is a requirement that we have to start metering that. And it's part of the plan when they came, the Metropolitan Water came out and did their audit. We told them that that was in progress and that it would be complete by the time we have our next audit. Is that correct, Frank?
That's correct. Four years and counting.
Yes.
Thank you. Is that something we also can recoup the cost of the water if there's a situation like that in a commercial or an apartment complex?
Yes. And so y'all, and as part of last year's budget adoption, you adopted a fee schedule for these fire line meters. We have not begun charging anything on these yet because we want to have them all in place before we start charging. So we will be able to charge once they're all in place, because the fee structure is in place for that.
Okay, so in order to... Okay, I'm sorry. So we'd have to look back at last year's budget book to see that fee schedule for that?
No, it's in the current budget book. It was a new item in last year's budget book, but it is in this current budget book as well.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Corky.
No, that's okay. This is just a fee schedule for the meters. It's not a fee schedule for the water. Is that correct?
It is. Let me flip to that page.
I was going to say, to use the water, it's like 10 times the amount. Anytime the water flows through that meter after using it for, shouldn't be using it all, but if it ever resisters, it's like 10 times the fee of the normal monthly fee that we are charging.
Okay, but we don't charge for a fire?
No, sir. No, sir.
That's what I thought. Okay.
So just for, so to have the fire line meter, there is a $20 per month charge on that, according to the fee schedule. It's $20 for a one-inch, a two-inch, a three-inch, four-inch, six-inch is $50, eight-inch is $60, ten-inch is $80, and a 12-inch is $110. So that was adopted in last year's book.
And that's just for commercial properties and apartment complexes?
It's for the ones that, I guess, according to building code, are required to have a fire line. Is that correct, Frank?
That is correct.
Any other questions on that?
And it just is making me think of more questions. So is that really just applied to new construction then? Or does it apply to old construction as well in terms of the upgrade of the fire line?
Susan, we're doing an inventory of all the fire lines now. That's new and old. New going forward, automatically they put a meter in that's required. What we're looking at is old, putting in new fire lines. Well, I think we put in about six or seven this year. Now we're out of money, so we've got to wait until next year. But we're doing an inventory for everyone that has a fire line, and we're adjusting to put those in. New construction, automatically put some in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so as I talked about on the previous slide, there was about 1.4 million that was general fund CIP. So the next few slides are going to detail those projects. You see, the first one is the automation of our inspections. That is a community development. I think we've talked about that at a couple of meetings. Rusty and his team are looking at a couple of providers to allow that process to be automated. And you can see the next line down is the electronic plan review at $150,000. And so those two things are going to help Rusty and his team tremendously to be able to automate that process and have a better process with inspections and having it scheduled and the response time, and also having plans to be provided electronically and reviewed, which is going to help with, that, it's going to help, obviously, kind of bring us in line with where other cities and counties are. But it's also going to help us from a record standpoint as well because instead of having all of those big plans, we're going to have those electronically. So that will help us going forward with the record retention of those as well. Next project down is computer upgrades for desktops, and that's a reoccurring project we have every year. And that just replenishes the computers citywide. And there's a schedule that Chris Addicks and his team come up with to replenish those on their schedule. The next two are related to the library, and these, the youth services and the adult services remodel have both been on the list for a while. Mary asked for those a couple of years ago, and she's very good at scheduling out her projects. And so that they kind of hit, usually it's one per year. The reason there's two in this year is because we actually moved one. And so she had planned them a year apart, but we moved one. And so two of them are falling in the current year. But this is just a, you know, do some much-needed work over the library to kind of bring things up to date and to make them more. I think the main focus of these is ADA compliance. The desk, when you go to the library and you go to these, they're too high. And these are to kind of bring them down level and to make ADA, make them ADA compliant and also to kind of make them, where you can actually see people sitting at those desks, and they can help you when you're in the library. So she had done, she's done this at the front desk a couple of years ago. And so this is just moving throughout the library, updating the other areas. Any questions on any of that? Okay. Park signage system-wide, this was a project that was adopted last year. And so Richard had a couple of years' worth of this to get all of the signs in place. This was something that came out of the Parks Master Plan to be at the front of the parks that kind of gives, it's going to include signage about parks throughout the city. And it also includes specific things about the park that they're in. And so that was part of a three-year project that y'all, that the council passed last year. This is year two of that project. Alterated to parks, there's a new playground for two- to five-year-olds at Taliesin. There was a playground that was put in for the older kids, I believe it was this current year. And so this is having something out there for the younger age group that since the older kids got a new playground, just trying to get something for the little kids out there. And then the next area, maintenance areas at Taliesin and Chuck Camp. Both of those facilities need some work. And so this is money to go in and kind of rehab those and to make those usable to get them more organized for storage and, you know, to make them more usable buildings with a little bit, you know, of some... I think they've got some issues out there where maybe there was a fire at one point that kind of burnt some of one of those maintenance sheds. And so this is just kind of trying to patch them up a little bit and make them usable so that Richard's staff can utilize them a little bit better. And then the last one here is the Pond Bank stabilization. And this is over the pond behind the community center. I think that people who've been on the council for a couple of years have heard us talk about this. The Pond Bank is eroding behind the community center. And so we've talked about this for a couple of years. And so we've budgeted $100,000 this year to go in there and do some work to stabilize the bank before it further erodes. Any questions on any of that?
Are the maintenance areas at both Taliesin and Chuck Camp, you said they were like buildings where things, is it storage and is it for leagues or is it for the...
No, it's for, it's for park staff. It's where they store, they've got supplies in there. They've got... They've got, um, equipment in there. Um, there's some chemical, there's some chemicals that are stored in there that, you know, they use on the, um, on the fields and everything else. And so this is for city, um, maintenance staff, parks maintenance staff, their supplies and maintenance equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, under public safety, um, we've got the fire training Connex boxes. We've talked about the fire train facility for a couple of years now. There's $75,000 in this budget to outfit them with Connex boxes. They have used funds in the current year to, um, to get some land over at Public Works Ready for this. And, um, and this is gonna help them be able to train within the city limits. Right now they're going out of the city limits to do their training and so they have to go out of service. And so this enables them to train in SMRA and to still be available, you know, if need be for calls. It also allows them to do more, um, multi-truck training. When you're leaving the city to go, um, somewhere else to do your training, you can't typically take, you know, several trucks out of service to be able to do that training. And so having it within SMRA city limits allows them a little bit more flexibility to get their training in, which is a requirement. They have to have, uh, training every, every year. So this, this helps them. We, like I've said, we've talked about this training facility for a couple of years. And so this is finally, um, it's finally coming to fruition in this current year budget. Also related to the fire department, there is their structural firefighting, firefighting gear. And this is their, their bunker gear. Um, this is, you know, what they wear into, uh, fires for protection. With all of the recent findings that they've had with firemen and firewomen, firefighters with cancer, there's a lot that comes from their gear. And so this is gonna enable the fire department to have an extra set of gear. And so if, um, they're not gonna put on an, an old set of gear without it being properly cleaned. And so they have, um, two extraction machines located in, in, uh, two of their stations. And so this will enable them to have a whole nother set of gear so that they're not putting back on that gear for carcinogens if they have to go back out on a call on fire before they're able to get it washed. So, um, that's another thing that's on the list for a couple of years.
Kristen, could I ask a question? Do I, do I hear that right? So one, is it one set of structural firefighting gear or how many, how many sets?
Well, yes, I'm sorry. It's, it's an extra set for the entire, um, for the entire fire department. And so, um, Jared, do you remember the number that that gets them? I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, but that's, that's fine.
I don't.
Yeah, but it's, it's a new set for every, for every member of the fire department.
Gotcha.
Okay, um, the next line item down is, uh, the water pipe replacement at the jail. So this was sort of a, um, last minute addition to the list. The jail's been having some issues related to their pipes. They have been kind of piecemeal, uh, trying to fix it. And, um, it was determined that the best thing is just to go in and do a complete replacement because they're kind of piecemealing it and it's all dated and needs a complete refresh. And so, um, Frank, uh, and I talked about this, Frank Durance talked to, I talked about this with Frank Durance and with Frank Martin. And so, um, we just, we added to the CIP list to go ahead and get that taken care of, um, before it causes more damage over at the jail. Next line item down is the police laptop computer refresh. This is similar to the desktop computers. This is just the refresh for all of the, uh, PD computers. Um, and this is the same thing. It's on a rotating schedule where they replace several computers every year. Next line I'm down is police station improvements. And that is going to, um, fund the floor replacements and the hallways of the police stations. The hallways, the stairwells are gonna be painted. Some of those, some of those walkways and walls have, um, are showing wear and tear. And, um, they're, um, not in the best condition. And so, um, this $75,000 is gonna get them replaced, um, with the LVT, I believe, is what they're gonna put down. And then it gets, um, a fresh coat of paint on all those walls, um, to make the, the police station, um, look a little bit better. Any questions on any of those? Okay. Um, miscellaneous carpet replacement, $20,000. That's a project that we have in here every year, um, for various things. It's, it's been used, um, many different departments, um, every year. And we don't specify which department. It just is, um, sort of at the discretion of, um, building grounds and of admin and just kind of who, who needs carpet replaced, um, the most. And so we allocate $20,000 to that on an annual basis. HVAC replacement, $106,000. We changed the way that we, um, handle the ADH base, the HVAC, um, a couple of years ago. We decided to annually put an amount in there, um, for replacement of HVAC. And so some years we'll use the whole amount of $106,000 and some years we won't and it will carry over to subsequent years, which would then help us, um, maybe replace some of the larger units that we would need to replace. So that was added. I believe this is the, the second year that we've budgeted this way. So, um, the next one on here is Broner Hall improvements, $100,000. And, um, they, the, this was submitted because of the historic nature of Broner Hall. And it's going to replace, um, just some of the, some of the deteriorating equipment, um, why the deteriorating structure over there. So facial board, overhangings, eaves and sidings, it's gonna kind of just go in and, and fix some of that that's showing some wear and tear and some age. Next one down is detention pond maintenance. And that one is another project that we added, so that we're putting $100,000 to that annually. Kevin brought this, Kevin and Frank, I think both have brought this up, um, over the last couple of years that there are a lot of detention ponds that have been, um, not well taken care of. And so, um, it's our responsibility to get those taken care of. And so, um, we've started, we've budgeted $100,000 annually to go towards, um, getting those maintained and cleaned up where they need to be. Next line I'm down is the sanitation cans, the underground. This is another project that's been going on for a couple of years. And this is just trying to get all of those older underground sanitation, sanitation cans, um, replaced. So.
Can I ask a question? The detention pond maintenance, uh, is that on our properties or in subdivision properties?
I think that that is, Kevin can probably answer that better, but I think that, um, it's a little bit of, it's a little bit of both. I think some of these older, um, these older neighborhoods, no one has been taking care of the detention ponds. And so, um, I see Frank turn on his microphone, but so I think we, we have, we have a, we're liable to go in and get them cleaned up through EPA and stuff. Right Frank?
Yeah, most of them, uh, most of them belong to the city Corky, back in the eighties. When all the building was done, the one made it, made them homeowners association, maintain them like we do now. So there's, we had a, Troy did a study for us, put together, and there's a lot of them out there that we, that we have to take care of. And they have been neglected for several years. And, uh, that's what this is for. Most of them are the city's responsibility.
I just, I wanna go on the record and say that, that should be taken care of out of our stormwater fees. But in order for that to be taken care out of our stormwater fees, we're gonna have to continue to raise our stormwater fees. That's all I have to say.
So I have a question about the underground sanitation cans. I know that there's a lot of neighborhoods inward five that still have those. They're fee simple townhomes. And they have, uh, don't have garages, uh, and there may be, you know, at least six units to a building. And they don't have a place to put their, um, Herbie Kirby, so it creates other issues. Are you talking about replacing those in those neighborhoods that still have those? Because.
When we talk about replacing, Susan, we're talking about replacing the in-ground can itself, not replacing it with a Herbie Kirby.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
We still have, we still have roughly a thousand plus underground cans that we cannot get rid of due to issues like you just talked through. They only have garages or they're middle of a townhome situation or whatever, where they can't be rolling their carts in and out. And that's not to replace them with Herbie, that's to replace the can itself.
So it's like repairing what's there to replace it with another underground can. Is that what you're saying? Just for clarification?
Yes ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Kristen, I see, um, you know, a total CIP is about 1.4 this year, right? If I remember right, you showed for future projections for next four or five years with, uh, fairly significant decreases, uh, maybe about two or three years out?
Yes. What happens with that is, is that, um, we do, um, we do ask the departments to give us a five-year schedule to try to schedule out what they're gonna do. But, um, what always happens is, is that, um, those outer years will start filling up and getting, um, getting up into the same range into the, you know, the million and a half, two, three million dollars. Because things will come up. And, um, we, we had things, we had several projects, um, this year that came up that had not been scheduled out. We tried to, we try to not have, um, a lot of new projects added to, um, the year we're budgeting. So we hope that we at least have a, a good couple of years. So like in this case, um, when we look at fiscal year 22, um, we would say, hey, you know, you, you should have had a pretty good idea of what you wanted for 21 and 22. And so there needs to be a really good reason why you submit something new for 2022 for us to consider that. It always happens, we get new projects, but then we get bombarded with projects for, you know, the next couple of years. So I think if we were to look at the, the last year budget book, you would probably see the, the same thing. You would see lower amounts that were in there for 21 and 22 and they've bumped up in this, this current year schedule. So I guess what I'm saying is, um, that looks really good, but that's not gonna be the reality of those years or being that low in the future because we're gonna add stuff to them.
Okay, is there anything significant in 2022? That's like, you know, I mean, a major item or is it all similar, just a variety of projects across the city?
So.
Replacement that year.
That's the, yeah, I was gonna say that's the roof replacement. So $735,000 is the roof replacement and that's for PD.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
I can tell y'all, this was my first time going through the CIP process with everybody. And each project is met with a lot of scrutiny and questions. And I'm, I'm confident in the, in the process and that we've gotten to a good, good place. I mean, they're, they're, they're just poured over, um, by, by lots of eyes and lots of questions. So just an idea of how that process goes.
Yeah, we, we meet weekly to talk about these and go into a lot of detail. So they, they are put through a process for sure. Okay, so, um, go down. But you can see on this slide, okay, I'm sorry, so vehicle replacement. So, um, Jared tou- touched on this, um, earlier, um, when he was talking about, um, the fund. You can see the total for this year is, um, a million, 362, 575. Of that scheduled replacement is 800, over 800,000. There are 10 scheduled replacements. There are two things that are previously adopted additions that were adopted. That is a huge watch for, for, and it is a hydro shooter for the street department. So those were fully adopted, but they were moved out until 2020. You have 393,000 of new requests and early replacements. The early replacements are three PD vehicles. Um, and there's also an early replacement of, um, recycling. Included in that amount there, when you have the new recycling truck, we, we have that one and we have two scheduled replacements also. So there's gonna be three trucks replaced. That, that is, um, there's a, a new addition of a recycling route. I'm sorry, I'm gonna take that back. We took that out because we put the person in, sorry about that. So, so they're just, um, trying to get all the trucks updated because we haven't had much, um, recycling trucks. And so two weeks ago, and they've asked for, um, an additional recycling truck to be early replaced due to maintenance on it. And then, um, there's also included in these numbers is, um, an upgrade to a water sewer vehicle. It's been upgraded to a four by four instead of just a standard, um, vehicle. So, um, and you can see on here, as Jared mentioned earlier as well, we also have $100,000 worth of emergency funds putting in to fund some of the unforeseen things that, that go with our fleet. We started, I believe this is the third year that we've budgeted that $100,000 extra. And, um, we have utilized it in the previous, uh, two fiscal years, um, when we've had accidents or had, you know, trucks that have, um, died on us. I will say, um, there is, um, one, um, new addition to the fleet and it is a, um, a truck for code enforcement. I, I think we found out this year that Rusty kind of inherited a truck that, um, was supposed to be, it was supposed to be retired and it was, he was still utilizing it. His staff needed it and, um, he kind of was one truck down on the replacement schedule. And so we have fixed that this year and we've added one new addition to the fleet for code enforcement. So like I said, you can see it's 1.3 million dollars. Um, so you have any questions on that?
You were talking about the, uh, new request and early replacements of, you were just doing it and I have some background or something. Could you go over that one more time?
Yeah, for, so for, um, the new addition, there's a new code enforcement truck. And then there are three early replacements, um, that are PD vehicles. And, um, and then there is an early replacement of a recycling truck. So that's, that's the, all the new requests and early replacements.
Okay, thank you.
And just on that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the PD, this 2021, Jerry, was the, the year that PD had their, um, their large vehicle in there and they, is that correct? Am I correct saying that?
We had a, a mobile command vehicle in the vehicle replacement fund scheduled for a few years. And, uh, this year, police decided they, uh, their priority was gonna be these three new traffic units instead. So, uh, they've, they've essentially swapped us. They've withdrawn the mobile command vehicle from the schedule and have backed for these three early replacements instead.
Yeah, thank you, Jared. I want to make sure I had that right in my brain here. So there was money in the budget. It's just been a swap of what they're gonna spend it on. Okay. So next slide, um, is personnel. So the only position that is being recommended for funding is a, is a part-time museum assistant. Number you see here is a three-quarter of a year, um, impact for a 30-hour position. So, um, that, there were 19, um, full-time positions and one part-time position that was submitted. 19 of the positions that totaled over 1.1 million dollars were not recommended for funding. The museum assistant was recommended because Jenny is in museum by herself. And this provides a, a little bit of assistance with that, so she's not over there by herself. So when people are, um, coming into the museum or she's downstairs, um, trying to, you know, organize the materials, this gives her someone else in the museum with her, um, so that there's not, um, a safety concern for her being there by herself. Any questions on that?
Is the museum open, um, like every day? Or what is the, the actual schedule of the, that it's open?
Museum hours are Tuesday through Saturday from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. So this would be, um, six hours a day that this person would be there. It would be working from 10 to 4.
So as long as it's open to the public, that person would be there with Jenny, so she's not by herself.
So in standard practice, there'll always be two people, two, two staff there at all times?
Um, unless we would have to, you know, switch off for lunch or if I have to go to a meeting or something like that, um, this has, you know, this leaves us with a staff person, somebody who's, you know, a city employee who is there in the building. Um, we are also working on implementing a docent program and those people, um, are being vetted through the, um, police department. And we'll go through some training, but it's not leaving one of them in charge of the, um, physical safety of the building and the collections.
So, so that was going to be my next question. So the docent is a volunteer pos- position? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. Docents are, um, specific to the museum field usually, um, volunteers. They go through some training and so they will be utilized to, um, welcome people into the museum and answer general questions, um, of visitors and, um, show them around the main exhibit areas.
So I know when, uh, some of the discussions started about the museum and when we, um, added a museum employee, there were quite a, uh, you know, I know that the museum was different, but there were, was a, a group of volunteers. And, and I think you still have a, a, a group, a board, right, of the, um, for the museum? And I just wondered if that is in, you know, it was, I remember it being a discussion of how important the volunteers were in terms of the museum. And I just wondered if, if that's still a, an option or if they're available and that kind of thing.
Um, when I started, the docents that were available were enough, um, to cover about half the time that the museum was open. They are two shifts per day, two, three-hour shifts. Um, I, just before we had the issue with the basement flooding in the museum and had to shut down before the COVID hit, uh, I had just implemented a docent program. I had gone through one, um, introductory training session and I had just gotten back about, um, 12 to 15 cleared volunteers through the PD. So once we are able to reopen the museum, I will be able to implement a docent program quite quickly.
Have the repairs been made?
They are going on, um, today and tomorrow. They might continue through, um, next week, but, uh, Aqua Guard said that they're trying to get it done in two days.
So, uh, so there's only, uh, only volunteers that would be part of the docent program? There's not volunteers like there were before that would, that did like two to three-hour shifts? Is that just the, for the docents? Is that what you're talking about or?
The docents would be, um, again, two, um, three-hour shifts per day. So I would have, um, people come in, um, twice a day, at least one person. We might end up having the point where we would do more than one person volunteering at a time. Um, and that's the first volunteer program we are really implementing. Next volunteer program would be, um, people who want to come and volunteer and work on the collections and, and other aspects, but that is dependent upon us getting the basement collection space back to, um, working order.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, um, reclassifications, um, these are, these reclassifications would be effective on July 1st. Um, you can see that there is a, um, a long list of reclassifications. Um, there were four that were submitted that you'll see in your budget book that were not recommended. Um, but all of these on this list were recommended for upgrade. Um, the first one is the special projects coordinator and, um, that is being requested from a 22 or 24, um, due to changes in that job and some additional, um, responsibilities, um, that is justifying that grade increase. Um, budget impact of that is about $14,000. Um, next one down, maintenance tech to maintenance tech senior. Um, that is, there's currently, um, a maintenance tech senior in that division. And this is going to add a second one. It's sort of a progression in, um, building grounds based on training and experience. And so, um, Frank has requested one of those to be reclassed. The next one down is the community relations assistant to here to a community relations coordinator. Um, Jennifer has submitted this for a couple of years and this is, I'm just trying to get that position um, more in line with other similar positions, um, in the city. It's going from a 13 to a 15. It's about a $3,000 increase. Um, the next one down, the KFC coordinator to, um, just looking at a grade change on that one. Um, similar to the community relations coordinator, just trying to kind of get them lined up, um, with other positions in our, um, grade schedule. That one is a $500 increase. There's been office assistant in fire prevention that is looking to be reclassed from a grade six to a grade 11 admin assistant. And that is just due to the workload that, um, she has taken on over at fire prevention and to align her with, um, you know, what her duties are, um, in her, in her current job. Um, the next one down is for also for fire prevention. It's a fire engineer to a fire lieutenant. Um, everyone in fire prevention is a lieutenant grade. And so this is just, um, aligning the individual that's an engineer with, um, the others in his department. Um, he will go through a promotional process like they all do in fire department. But this, um, they're all doing the same work over there and so they should all be at the same, um, at the same rank. So they should all be fire lieutenant. Um, then couple down related to library. Um, Mary's asking for a library clerk senior to be reclassified from a seven to a circulation manager at a 12. Um, about $4,000 increase there and that is just due to, um, increased responsibilities. That's what, that's what most of these are. They're all related to increased, um, job duties and extra things that these, um, employees are doing for the reclass. Um, next one down, technical services librarian. Um, that one is just simply a grade change. Um, she is doing, um, the job of, um, a couple of positions if you were to look at other libraries. And so this is just a, a change in her grade. It is no current budget impact. It's just, um, provides a little bit of growth opportunity for her if she progresses in her position. Um, next one down is the fleet supervisor. Um, this year, um, we put into place a, um, and Jared, I'll give my credit for this one. He did a fantastic job putting together, um, SOP that kind of, um, documents our process and it relates to our fleet and buying vehicles and surplus and, um, and, um, just everything related to, to the fleet process. And in that, um, SOP, it, um, it put a little bit more on our fleet supervisor. Made him a little bit more responsible for things and, um, just, you know, put a little bit extra on him. And so because of that, um, it was recommended that he go from a grade 21 to a grade 22. It's about $3,700 raise for him. Um, next one down, the, um, parks admin, the event in Selva's, one from an eight to 15. That one is just to align the position at the community center with a summer position at, um, at Broner of the historic buildings. And so this just gets them in the same grade level. Um, and it's about a $4,700 increase to the budget. Um, next one down, senior program coordinator going from a 15 to a 21. Um, that's, um, having that position due to a superintendent, um, will have more responsibility. Um, instead of just taking over, um, things at the Wolf Center, it's going to have a, a broader, um, possibility of, um, all the recreation services. Next one down is the senior crime analyst position at a 15 and being, that being reclassed to a sergeant at, at a 20. Um, there's a lot of, um, a lot of things on that position that I think they're going to be responsible for. The, the biggest one is having someone be a little bit more accountable for some of their, um, some of their fleet requests and, um, just kind of owning that process. Uh, I think that's, um, their, their current quartermaster works with Patton, our fleet manager on that. But this is to kind of have a little bit more, um, have someone in that position with a little bit more authority and have a little bit more ownership of that role as they go forward. There's other duties that, um, that position's going to assume as well, but, um, that's kind of a, a main focus of that position. And then the last one on here is truck driver for sanitation and, um, moving that to a, um, well, my screen went away. Moving that to a, um, a, a more senior position going from a grade eight to a nine. Um, it's just giving that driver a little bit more responsibility, um, and given, um, because he's, he's doing, um, additional responsibilities, just giving him a little bit of a bump of an increase and a little bit more, um, incentive, um, for what he's doing. Because he's assuming more responsibilities than, um, the other truck drivers for the sanitation, so. I know it was a lot. Um, I was trying to register them in the interest of time. Um, all of these, like I said, are budgeted for a July 1 start date, which is typical, um, what we do every year. Reclasses are effective, um, at the first thing of the new, um, budget year. So that would be July 1, 2020.
So Kristen, the, uh, fire prevention or fire engineer, uh, upgrading that position to a fire lieutenant, is that just one person or is it more than one?
It's just, yeah, it's just one. Um, every other position in, in that, in, in fire prevention is a lieutenant. I think what happened is, um, a position was added and it was added at the engineer level. And so it's kind of been that way for a couple of years and they're all doing the same task and so they should be at the same level.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, all right. Um, Jared touched on these earlier also, um, when we, when he was talking about contingency. Um, you've heard us talk at the budget committee meetings about this. Um, there is a 3% increase for sworn public safety personnel that is to be effective, um, January 1st. Um, it's $175,000. The, there is a 2.5% increase for certified paramedics and fire. Um, they currently have a 5% um, built in to their salary for holding that certification, which is a, it's a certification that takes them all over a year. I think it's 18 months to, um, to go through school and get that completed. And so they do get a bonus, um, on that. It's going from a 5% to a 7.5%. This is also budgeted at a half a year for a January start date. It's $41,000. And then as, um, Jared mentioned, um, our merit increases are in there based on a January, um, start date. Those have typically been, um, for certain level, they're getting, there's zero raise and then based on scores, people get a one and a half, two and a half or three and a half, uh, merit increase. Um, as I've said a couple of times, um, these are all a January 1 and all of these have to have a subsequent approval by council. So they're in the budget, but they do not, um, they are not effective until we bring them to the full council in December for y'all to vote for us to move forward. Any questions on that?
So, um, this is in the budget, uh, for 20, 2021 fiscal year and that's in there, is that what you're saying? But.
Yes, they are, you're, um, the 175 and the 41 are actually included in the departmental budgets, but they are a separate line item and the merit increases are included in our contingency fund.
And so you're, you're saying even if we vote, uh, for, to approve the budget, we'll still have to come back and, uh, vote for these, these items? Is that what you're saying or is that just?
No, no, that's, um, for all three of these. All three of these are in there and it's noted, um, in the budget book. It's in the memo and it's in, in the budget book in a couple of places that these are, have to have a subsequent approval by council. And I'll typically do that in December, um, so that everything is ready to go effective, um, January 1.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, we're finally almost done. Um, I know this is a long meeting. Um, so today was our first presentation at the Cal to y'all. Um, as Jared mentioned, um, your budget books are at City Hall. So, um, when you have some time, you want to run over, you can pick them up or you can also access them, um, on the, the website. Um, we'll have our next meeting with y'all, um, on May 14th. Um, it's going to have, we'll discuss any changes that have, have come about, anything that we've changed, modified since this presentation, answer any questions you might have. Um, on May 18th, we have our first formal budget presentation and public meeting. Um, that is a requirement by state law that we have, um, a, a public hearing. We are still determining the best way we're going to do that depending on kind of where we are, um, in the social distancing. Um, and, um, I believe the, what we're doing right now, having this open meeting and having it open to the public and having them available to speak, um, will hopefully satisfy those requirements. Um, Tanya and I have talked about that and I know that she's talked to Scott as well to make sure that, um, we're meeting those requirements. So, um, we did our, uh, budget ad. It's going to hit the NDJ tomorrow. And in that ad, we have announced this May 18th day and we have, um, informed the public that, um, they can go to our website. Um, and there'll also be information posted at City Hall, um, detailing, um, exactly how we're going to do that public hearing. So, um, that's, that's going to be continued tomorrow. Um, so after that meeting, uh, after we hear from the public and we hear any other cond- uh, any, um, concerns from council, um, we have a meeting on the 28th to discuss any changes and then we're scheduled to adopt the budget on June 1st at the council meeting that night. Any questions about that?
Is this the same number of public meetings that we usually have in terms of presenting the budget to the public?
Yes ma'am, we are, um, we are required to, to have, um, the one meeting and, um, and so we have it on the 18th. And, um, historically, where we've, on the June 1st adoption date, we've also opened that up to the public for any public conversation at that meeting before council adopts the budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I know that was a lot. Um, so if you, um, once you digest all that, if you have any questions, need anything, um, just reach out, um, and we'll answer your questions. Um, I asked that if you do have, um, a lot of questions, if you could please let us know. Um, you know, try to give us a little heads up before the May 14th if there are things that, you know, we're going to require some research um, so that we are able to prepare for those questions at our next Cal meeting um, and not kind of catch us off guard. That way we can hopefully get them resolved at that May 14th meeting.
Okay, um, I know you said y'all did a kind of a, a summary version of the budget book. Um, is it possible for me to get the other detailed portions of it included as well?
Um, we can, right now, I mean, you can, you can access it on the link to see the whole, to see the entire amount. Um, I think, you know, next time, um, Jared or I are in the office, um, we could probably pretty write a copy and stick it in your office.
Okay, that would be helpful for me, I think. Thank you.
As Kristen mentioned, um, you know, I would also like to encourage you to please take a look at the budget information in advance. Let us know if you have any questions. Uh, she and Jared have done an excellent job pulling everything together. Um, and, um, you know, it, it does my heart good to have her, Kristen and Jared on my team. Uh, so I hope that we will be able to go through this budget process smoothly and answer any questions that you have, um, in hopes of presenting it and, uh, getting it on the agenda for June 1st.
Thank you, Kristen and Jared. And, um, the only other thing I had, budget slash.
And, um, the only other thing I had budget slash finance related is y'all got the email from Tammy earlier today or, and all the days are streaming together. Was it today or yesterday? But anyway, we're looking at all of the, all of the, um, any and all funds that might be available to us, uh, to help us, uh, with some of the shortfalls because of COVID-19. And, um, we don't know what that's going to look like. There's still federal stimulus coming out. There's still, um, the county's getting money, but they're trying to get, trying to get some legislation where the cities get some help. So, um, all that we've looked at tonight doesn't include anything that we would possibly get to fill some gaps. And we're going to be continuing to work on that, um, as we go. So just keep that in mind.
Eric, the 192 million, I think it was that the county got?
132, 132. They can't give us any, they can't give us any of it.
You got, gotcha. Okay. That was my question.
There's federal, federally, they're looking at how they can help cities. And there's all kinds of groups, as you might imagine, advocating on our behalf at that level. So we'll, we'll see what, we'll see what ends up happening.
Derek, was that really a can't or they won't?
They cannot.
Yeah, from my understanding, um, they, they cannot. The guidelines don't allow for them to give it to the cities. However, the county manager, when I spoke with her on yesterday, um, she would like for cities, for us to put together a written request to the, uh, board of commissioners. And she will ask on the city's behalf if, uh, the board would be willing to give us some type of financial assistance that would allow us to be reimbursed for any COVID-19 related purchases that we have made. The county manager has asked for that information by May the 16th, I believe, um, in hopes of presenting that to her board at the May 28th meeting. So, uh, myself and Kristin and Roy will be putting together a complete packet, uh, for Cobb County.
Thank you.
Tammy, thanks for your diligence, looking at all those different funding sources and working with the other managers and figuring it all out. And Jackie McMorris, appreciate you staying on top of all that.
You're welcome.
Ms. Heather, what's next on our agenda?
Let me pull that up for you, sir. I believe what we have next is going to be, um, review of the May 4th mayor and council agenda.
Okay.
Let me grab that.
All right. I know it's not too, I know it's not too long of an agenda. Let's see. There's UCB that we talked about this evening is under land issues, zoning annexations. And then formal business is Smirnoff Whitfield drainage improvements. Frank?
Yes, sir. That is, uh, we were requested, uh, we'd replace some, uh, storm drain pipe out there and bypass and over kitchen area and do away with it, put in some catch basins. We put out the beer, we got 11 bids back and this company with 303,000, uh, they've done work for Marietta. I've talked to, uh, the guy that works with them up there, said they do real good jobs.
And you said 11 bids was most, the most that we've ever gotten on something, right?
Yeah, I went back to it the one yesterday. I was expecting, uh, the normal four or five and I was pleasant to see 11. It's got a better price that way.
Good. Any questions on that item? All right, item B is the next phase of the CDBG, uh, approval, right Tammy?
Yes, sir. That's correct. That's just, um, we have to do, every three years, we have to do a, uh, resolution with CDBG, informing them that we are going to continue participating in the CDBG program through Cobb County. And Mary's been doing a really good job staying on top of all of this force, uh, with the staff over at Cobb.
Any questions there?
Can you just explain the difference of, of the, the agreement that we voted on at the last council meeting and this one? Either Tammy or, uh, Mary?
Well, I'll tell you, the last agreement had to do with, uh, the fact that we wanted to be a sub recipient. We wanted to continue as a sub recipient of Cobb County CDBG program. And then the cooperation agreement is that we agree to continue. Uh, our desire is to continue being a sub recipient, um, of the program. Did that explain that to you, Susan?
Um, well, okay. So one is just for the, uh, to continue for the next three years, but the other one was for a certain year period, uh, period then, is that-
Well, the cooperation agreement is for three years, the years 2021 through 2023. And that's the cooperation agreement that we agree that we will, um, that we want to continue as a sub recipient. And the other agreement was that we are, we understand that we're a sub recipient, uh, of Cobb County and we want to go by their guidelines or regulations as such, and that we want to remain, uh, as a sub recipient of the CDBG program.
And that sub recipient agreement also, um, allows us or to accept the funds that we receive from Cobb County. And you may recall, uh, for the program year, we will be getting $212,000 through that program year 2020, through, uh, the sub recipient agreement.
That's correct.
And then the, I know it's kind of confusing, Susan, because they got all these different agreements. And actually Scott and Mary and I were on the phone with Cobb, I think it was day before yesterday. And as a, um, sub recipient or an entitlement city, um, the cooperation agreement also allows us to continue, uh, working, um, through the CDBG office for them to help manage, assist us in managing our program. Uh, so that was, you know, one of the requirements that they have, that we do this resolution that has to be passed by the council, um, stating that we are going to continue in the program. We did this, um, in 2017. The council approved the cooperative agreement in 2017. And so it is time for us to renew that agreement again. And it will begin, as Mary mentioned, in 2021.
And also Susan, the sub recipient agreement is, uh, to accept the awarded dollars, as Tammy said, and the amount is 212,178.31 for administration and public facilities improvements. And accepting that a grant, by accepting that grant, we assume responsibilities to carry out various housing and community development activities.
And that was the one that we voted on at the last meeting?
Yes. Mm-hmm. To, we were awarded a certain amount of dollars and we agree to accept those dollars and to put those forth, uh, towards responsibilities to carry out, you know, housing and community development activities.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, next is the consent agenda. We've got the minutes from April 16th and April 20th. Item C is cybersecurity coverage renewal. What do we know about that? Tammy?
Tammy, do you want to cover that?
That's Carol's item.
Okay.
Okay, Carol's item, okay.
Good evening. Um, after we, the last council meeting, when we approved the, the Germer renewal for, for the package coverage, um, that renewal includes $250,000, yeah, $250,000 of cyber liability and security, um, coverage. This excess coverage brings that coverage amount up to $1 million. It's a coverage we originally took out in 2018 to bring us at, up to an adequate amount of coverage. Um, the renewal is, uh, $7,430 for the year, which is an increase of just about 8% or $551. Um, the broker said this increase was driven by market changes for municipalities and public entities. I am sure having something to do with some of the experiences that, um, Atlanta and some other, other municipalities have gone through recently. So we were just requesting approval to bind the coverage for the renewal for the 2020, 21, uh, 2021 policy term.
Thank you. Any questions for Carol? All right, and item D is approval award one appointment to KSB, Mr. Sean Garcia. And I don't know how many of y'all know him, but he and his wife are the ones that got that. In addition to some other things, they got that Smyrna swag company that did the, um, Smyrna strong t-shirts for us for the support Smyrna effort. So I'm glad that, uh, he's, uh, put himself forward to serve on that board. Any other questions about the agenda? All right, I know we're getting late. I, I just have a couple of things that will go around the horn. Y'all may have saw, may have seen the, uh, governor's executive order today, uh, which extends the, um, state of emergency, health emergency in the state to June 12th at 11:59 PM. It extends the shelter in place for the medically fragile, um, which is 65 and over and a host of other categories. Uh, but, but really didn't do anything else except just extend those things. So, you know, from a city perspective, we've been looking at when we're going to reopen and how we're going to do it. My whole thing is I don't, I think we should do it cautiously. I don't think we should be at a race to be first. I think we should do, uh, like their, the staff is working on and Roy and Tammy, some kind of a staggered, uh, phased, uh, back to normal type thing where you've got staggered shifts, people coming in, but it's not open to the public. Kind of getting our act together first. Um, that could start as early as probably May 11th. But we're watching the state numbers right now, um, new cases. And we're not necessarily, we haven't seen 14 days straight of decline. There's, there's been a couple of jumps here and there. I just, I want to be cautious and protect our staff and protect our citizens. Uh, I don't think that we're missing a beat as far as serving the public. And so, uh, I'm, I'm just, I want to be very cautious in how we approach reopening. Any questions about that or Roy or Tammy, you have anything you want to add?
Um, just wanted to mention, you know, Roy and I have met with every single department. Every department has put together a written reopening plan. Uh, that plan includes, as the mayor mentioned, staggered, uh, shifts for their departments. Um, it also includes, uh, making sure that we have proper cleaning equipment for our staff. And then we are even going to go a step further to do, uh, purchase contactless, um, thermometers to do temperature checks for any of our staff that are going to be coming into the building. So, um, as the mayor mentioned, you know, we, we, you know, are looking at that May 11th date. If things change, we'll make sure we communicate that to you. But again, that's going to be on a phased approach. Uh, we still will be somewhat close to the public. But, um, you know, we think this is going to be the best way to keep our staff safe and keep our residents safe. Roy, you got anything else you want to add? I'm sorry, Mayor.
I was just going to say, just like what we did when we closed things down, we did it based incrementally on information that we had at the time. And that's the way we plan to cautiously reopen and get back to some sense of new normalcy. If the data doesn't show that it's time to do that, well, then it's not time to do that. And I, I just, I think there's enough questions out there and you can see that by, uh, what the business, how the business community has reacted, uh, to the ability to open. Uh, you know, you've got our, our staple restaurants, Porchlight Atkins, Zuko, others that are, have decided not to open. A lot of businesses have decided not to open, even though they have the option. So, um, I just think we're not quite there yet, in my opinion. And, um, just want to be careful about how we proceed. Roy, anything else?
All right, no, sir. It's all been covered. I just appreciate the, the overall sentiment, support. I completely, 100% agree with, with, with that overall idea of let's, let's do it cautiously. There, we're not in a hurry. We, like you said, we're not missing a beat. So let's, we've spent the last month and a half protecting our staff and protecting our citizens. So there would, there would be no reason for us to, to change stance.
I have a question, uh, regarding, uh, some of this that I don't understand. I gave, uh, I got a, I received a, a phone call, a message from, um, a, a citizen of Smyrna. Not, he said he wasn't in my ward, um, and I don't, uh, know him, but he was very upset about, um, that, uh, what he said was that he, uh, he had to wait in the line outside to get something to go. Um, but there were people that were going in and sitting down. And he, I guess he wasn't allowed to go in and get his order. I don't know what the rules are or anything like that, but he was very, his voice message was very upset that, 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 about it. So I don't know if anybody can clarify, uh-
Well, we'd probably need, we'd probably need some more specifics, uh, before we could answer that question. Where was he? What were the circumstances? What day was it? Was it under the last order or the new order?
He called Jared. It was, it was, uh-
Susan, was he at Del Taco?
Yes.
Okay, he called me.
Okay.
And I, I had forwarded him to, uh, Deputy Chief Harvey, who is going to speak to him. There was a lot more circumstances involved in that. So the team is handling it.
Yeah, he called me as well. Yeah.
Who was that? Oh, uh-
It's Jennifer. I talked with him too.
Oh, wow. He didn't, I didn't speak with him. He just left a message.
Hey, he called me.
Yeah, he left me two, two, two minute long voicemails about it. And, uh, uh, I didn't know where to go, but I'm glad at least, uh, some processes started internally.
Suffice to say, PD is dealing with it, right?
Exactly, exactly. I appreciate it too.
Okay.
All right.
I'm glad he wasn't there when I, uh, returned his phone, sort of. Because I, if y'all were already handling it, thank you.
The next thing I want to just briefly mention, we, we went over $100,000 raised for support Smyrna yesterday, which I thought was awesome. Laura and I drove around and we've got 1,100 signs, over, over 1,100 signs that about right landed. Uh, they're everywhere. It's awesome. And we've been able to help these folks. It's, it's really, really cool how we're coming together. And then the hot meals program is still making, I think, 400 meals a week. Really good stuff. Uh, no, I'm sorry, 400 meals, three times a week, so 1,200 meals a week. Uh, the last thing I have, a lot of attention and effort and, I mean, so much has gone into tomorrow, to the service at Sun, at, uh, Truist Park. Penny has been outstanding in helping organize. There's been a lot of people involved, but I want to turn it over to Penny because she's got all of the details about where you need to be, when you need to be there. And then, um, kind of generally why we approached this like we did. And Chief, you can, you can chime in too. Uh, I, we, we did the walkthrough today. It's going to be a fantastic, uh, way to honor, um, Officer Ewing. And, uh, we're doing it in a way that's going to keep people safe. We, this is one of those we had to get right because we'll be under the microscope because of the timing of it. Uh, but I'll turn it over to Penny for, um, general overview, instructions and anything else y'all have.
Good evening, members of the council. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Um, first off, everyone, um, we've had a tremendous amount of effort from so many people at the PD as well as the Braves helping us pull this all together. Um, it is a 100% collaborative effort to get every piece that we needed in place, um, including additional help coming from Homeland Security, uh, all the way down to our wonderful city volunteers. Uh, for members of the council, uh, if you are not in the procession, which I'm assuming the only person who's in that is actually the mayor, I'm going to encourage that everyone tries to get to the stadium by 10 AM. I believe Christie sent out an email with full directions. Um, you guys will be parking in the orange deck. Um, and then Christie will meet you, meet you there. We do have, um, masks, uh, for each of you that Christie will have in her possession and will be able to get to you guys to wear into the stadium. Um, I know there's been some concerns about, uh, actually getting there with the road closures. Cobb PD is, is doing a wonderful job and is managing that entire process for us. This crew that works at the field and the stadium are very, very adept at getting people moved in as quickly as possible. Um, the suggestion that I would make for those trying to get there is to kind of bypass the route, which is coming straight up Spring Road. I would suggest coming up Wendy Hill, dropping down on Cobb, um, then on Cobb Parkway, then going east on Wendy Ridge and then right on Hank Aaron. That should take you guys completely out of all the closures and gets you right- That should take you guys completely out of all the closures and get you right towards the orange deck. So you should be able to go north of the route and come back down and then join us.
And there's a lot of stress on getting there early.
Yes, please. We do anticipate around 500 vehicles that are going to be in the procession. So if anyone looked at the run of show and our event plan and wondering why they were leaving at nine and we weren't starting until 11, we literally anticipate it's going to take us over an hour to get all of those cars from Carmichael's to the stadium, even with all the roads blocked just due to the amount of cars that are going to be in the procession. We will be starting promptly at 11. We have a whole host of, of things that are going to take place. It will be a very respectful and a very wonderful ceremony to honor our, our fallen soldier and also our fallen officer. Does anyone have any questions for me? Or Chief? A Chief's on, right? Or Deputy Chief? I know maybe both of you.
We both are. I would like to, to say something. Hey, it's Joe Bennett. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Penny and the other staff members who have been so diligent in helping us. They have put together a program that should have taken four to four or five months and they did it in the span of four days. I can't speak highly enough about them and what they've accomplished. And for the leadership and support of the mayor and council and Tammy through this tragedy, I have no words to say other than thank you. And with that, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
What about Penny? What about, you want to describe the process? I mean, when we get there and they get to the dugout, they'll be on the field. You want to go through any of that or is Christie going to deal with that tomorrow?
Well, Christie will be definitely down there with you, making sure that you guys get on and on, on and off of the field as efficiently as possible. It should be pretty easy. My, my one big takeaway is everybody needs to be in that dugout by 10:20. Your group, the council and the command staff is basically the start of everything that happens on the field for the, all of our events. And so everyone's prompt attention to being there in time. The stadium will be open at nine, so you could come early if you wanted. We're trying to keep everyone social distance inside the stadium. There will be signs throughout the stadium reminding everyone to sit every third seat and every odd row. So we'll have lots of signage. Council, we will actually direct you to seats directly next to the dugout when you come off of the stage. Sergeant Meredith Holt with the PD will be working in the away dugout where you guys are at and will be directing you as the mayor will stay on to speak later in the ceremony. Again, the goal is you guys are going to come on to the stadium or come out of the dugout onto the field. There will be a video that plays. You're welcome to turn around and watch the video while you're on the field if you'd like. That will end and then shortly after you guys will leave. So it's, it's not a very significant amount of time on, but the timing of getting you guys on is, is really our first event.
And Joe, Joe told, the chief told me pretty much, take your cues. There's going to be two Air Force guys in our line with us. Every time they salute, that's, that's our cue to put our hand over our heart. So just kind of follow their lead. We'll, we'll be standing out there for quite some time. So just, just be ready, be early. I know that some of you have asked about bringing friends, bringing former council members, whatever. We're not doing any of that because what we're trying to do is keep this only to public safety and military personnel, our staff and the family. Any, you know, there's been all kinds of requests, chamber folks and others, and, and they can all live stream it. We don't have any news media coming in. We don't have any of the public coming in because we think, we wanted to keep it in a controllable environment to make sure that we get this right. Nobody gets sick and we're able to honor Officer Ewing the way we need to. So just thank you so much, everybody, for your, all the volunteers. We've got several staff are coming to help make sure people are spaced out outside the stadium as they wait in line, do all kinds of other tasks that they have to do. It's, it's really, we're all coming together nicely to put on a really nice ceremony, so. So thanks, everybody. And with that, any questions about the service? Any, any comments, anything at all about tomorrow?
Mayor, I just wanted to remind everybody, no bags are allowed into the stadium tomorrow.
And Christie will have the masks, I believe, for you when you meet her at the orange deck, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. If any of you all get there before 10 and you want me to come out and meet you, just call me on my cell and I'll, and I can come out and meet you at any point.
Okay, thank you. Christie, I'll probably be dropped off, so I hope.
Okay, just, just text me or, or actually text is probably better. I might not be able to hear my phone, so just text me, call me, whatever. I'll come out and find you.
Okay, thank you.
I got my two helpers to hear us go around the horn. I'll go to Glenn, why don't you go first?
I got, I got my helper too. I guess the only thing is I've had a few calls. That's true, very true. I've had a few calls and emails this week. People noticed the zoning sign for the Campbell Road development was updated to sometime in May. So they're very concerned that the city's trying to sneak this past during Corona. And, and they want to know, will there be a planning and zoning meeting this month? Or what? So I just, I wasn't sure once to tell them. I figured that it would be postponed, but I just wanted to make sure.
The next one would be when, if we had one, Tammy? Or Rusty?
I think it was May 15.
No, no, the, the signs were updated the second Monday of April, so they've been out there for almost three weeks. No one changed anything over the weekend. But the next meeting is scheduled for May 11. But Scott and I and Tammy are trying to talk and work through how you would handle a public hearing in this kind of setting virtually? And how do you meet the minimum procedural requirements for holding that public hearing? Whether we can accomplish it, I mean, I don't know that the, the May 11th is, is going to be feasible at this point.
I think that's awfully tough right now and the, the same reason we haven't had public hearings items on our council agendas. It's awfully, awfully difficult, very hard to translate into a virtual environment effectively. And we'll continue to, continue to look at all the information that we have and, and react. But I, I would say a meeting May 11th is very unlikely.
And they're, and they're not, they're not ready for the 11th. They're looking at some improvements for Campbell Road and Spring Road. And that may require some discussions with the Namde Moon property. So there's a lot of moving parts still going on that I don't, they, they, they weren't expecting to go on the May 11th meeting.
Okay.
Does that help, Glenn?
Yeah, yeah.
What else you got?
I think that's it.
Austin?
Yeah, that was pretty much going to be my question too, because I think Glenn has probably had the same phone calls that I've had about, about that particular meeting. But in, in general, that, are we still operating under the same situation for our work session meetings and council meetings during May? Are we going to take them just each as they come? Or what is our plan for that? I know we're in this kind of weird spot and I think we all were thrown for a loop a little bit with how things are opening up or not opening up. I just wanted to kind of get an idea of what we're planning.
I just think we're still, still very cautious, you know? I'm not in a rush to get everybody in a room where we put ourselves in any risk or any danger. You know, again, Austin, I just think we continue to react to the data as it comes in. I'm not convinced, you know, there's no crystal ball, there's no, nobody's, I, I'm rooting like hell for the governor and, and everything to be okay, but I, I just don't know if we're there yet. And I, I think there's a lot of questions. So I just want to make sure we're, just want to make sure we're doing it the right way and I'm not, I'm not wanting to rush.
Right, so I mean, I guess that means obviously this next council meeting on Monday will be virtual as well. And our assumption is that the second.
Yeah, then we'll look at the next committee, the whole, you know, a few days before that, see where we're at.
Okay.
I just want to add too, I, I'd seen several things coming in for the license and variance board meetings that happen on Wednesday. And I think there were some that were scheduled. So what's the, what's the, it kind of goes along with the same thing with the public meetings. What's the story on that?
Tammy?
Those will also be, we had also talked about tabling those items. So what we could do is do, and, and Scott and Rusty, you chime in, because I think what we talked about is what we could do is, is have a meeting just to table those until, you know, we decided when it was a sufficient time for us to get back together again as, as a board to have those public hearings. But I think from my understanding, when we talked to Scott the other day, he recommended right now that we just hold off on, on any of those public hearings.
Yeah, that's right. If it's a public hearing, we ought to try to wait until we can all meet together. Even though you technically have access, the public has access, it's not the same. And especially controversial public hearing, like some of these zoning is coming up. The safe thing to do would be to, to hold off and have the public hearing. That will probably be litigated somewhere. I'm sure that's never happened in Georgia, as I doubt it has. But, you know, we can have a meeting, but if something requires a public hearing, like a zoning that are a action on a license or anything like that, we should hold off for now on the public hearings and maybe reevaluate later if necessary.
Hey, does anybody know the new CDC guidelines that came out this week have any? I know they describe about square footage per student in schools, but do they address it all public, public meetings?
I mean, even the governor's.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because even this, there's going to be some restrictions in place for a long time. I mean, I think there's every reason to believe it, particularly if we try to follow CDC guidelines. So, I mean, I would, I would encourage us to at least invest in online solutions for this because, you know, I mean, to follow Derek's lead, I agree that you got to be, got to be careful. But we don't, you know, we got to learn how to live with this, right? I mean, we got to learn how to move, move the city business forward in a way that's manageable and safe. And it does seem like technology might be part of that solution. So I don't know, I have no idea what the answer is, but I would encourage to look at it.
Well, you know, we may have a situation come up where we've, we've got opportunity to, to meet and socially distance those that come to our meeting, you know? I mean, we'll, we'll just kind of see how it goes. There's, there's no script for this stuff. And I agree, technology is hugely helpful, but dealing with that public hearing, that's what we've been trying to figure out how to do that. And we just didn't know how long it's going to last, still don't.
Yeah, and you know, the law trumps any of that. Anyway, the last thing we want is to be a poster case, you know, for some of this.
Right, I think just to, to be clear, I mean, I think that with, especially with this planning and zoning and these other ones that are especially controversial, I mean, it's going to be difficult to do, I think it's going to be difficult to do it virtually. I know there are systems out there that have, you know, situations like this where people even can be on a video and, you know, raise their hand and then be recognized. But to try to implement that anytime this month, I think it's going to be difficult to try to figure out. I mean, it could be something we look at down the road, but for the time being, I mean, I, I just don't see how we can, we can effectively do it here and then definitely not in person, even with the governor's guidelines and opening back up. They still said if you, you can't have more than 10 people in a space unless you can have everyone six foot away. And I guarantee with these public hearings, we're, we're not going to be able to comply with that at City Hall, so. I don't know, we've got to think of unique solutions, but yeah, right now I think we got to keep with the status quo that we had in April.
So will the license and variance board have to meet? Can, can the meeting be canceled or do you have to meet to table the items? Or, and will that meeting take place virtually with the, in that, for the license and variance? Just curious.
I mean, you can meet virtually on, on that, but you, but then you table it from the meeting. It, it, the only benefit to doing it, to tabling it in a meeting is, is if there's something that's been advertised for that meeting, then it doesn't have to be re-advertised because there's precedent that if something's advertised to occur in a certain time and at that time it's tabled to another certain time, then there's no need to re-advertize. So, so that's the only benefit. There's no problem with meeting virtually. This, this meeting that we're doing today actually fits into an exception in the open meetings laws. But when you have public hearings, there are requirements outside of the open meetings laws. And then there's no exception similar to this in those other requirements. So I mean, that's kind of the issue. I mean, I mean, there's a lot of ways to resolve this. If, if, if we saw that we had a social existence for a long time, we might find another place to have a zoning meeting, right? We could maybe find a bigger place. You can, you could have it at a high school gym, maybe, you know, or outdoors somewhere. Or, I mean, there's a lot of ways, if we had to think outside of the box to do it, but I don't, I don't think we're there yet. You know, this may just be a kind of an academic discussion, but it, you know, I don't know what other cities are doing yet, but I'm uncomfortable having matters that require a public hearing done this way. I mean, done, you know, through this, I, I just think it, 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 there's a lot of things that could potentially be problematic with that.
So are we in a place right now? I was just going to say, are we in a place right now where we can just make a call about this license and variance and the planning and zoning? Because it's coming up soon. We don't want to get into a situation like Scott said, where we're having to advertise for something and then make a decision, I mean.
I mean, if. I think the license and variance board is such a small scale meeting that if you wanted to roll some, something out and try something out where you space people appropriately. I mean, because typically it's just the applicants and you may get.
Rusty, I don't want to bring anybody into the buildings right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eric, I can tell you that we can't get any more than, than 15 people in the counseling chambers right now because we spent all day Friday walking it off to figure, try and figure out court. So there's no way to get all, even all the council members on the bench and then have any more than 15 people out in the, in the, in the seats. And then we're not abiding by the 10, the 10 people only in a room guideline.
Right. So I would think the May 11th, yeah, Joe, your point, Austin, May 11th, or when's the next P and Z, did you say? I'm sorry. Rusty, May 11th, yeah, I mean, I, I would not plan to have that and we'll go from there.
Okay, is that any, that's anything we have to do with that or is that just, who gets to say it's canceled?
And I defer to Scott, we're still under emergency declaration right now.
Yeah, let me make sure I understand. Is it already, has it already been posted as a public meeting?
Planning and zoning is always on the calendar.
But it's on the calendar, on the website. But it had, obviously had been posted. We only posted a few days before. Why don't you just post the cancellation of the meeting? You know how we do when we cancel a meeting? We do the same posting that we do when we, before we have a meeting, just do a cancellation. You guys just agreed today here to, that's going to be canceled. Yeah, it's probably better to cancel that, that particular P and Z meeting than it is to have the meeting and then table the issue just because of the appearance that people are going to have, you know, that, hey, you guys are trying to pull a fast one here. I, I just cancel it and then re, re, oh, something that important and controversial, I'd cancel it and reschedule it. And then you'll have to go out and post signs and all that kind of stuff.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I got a thumbs up, a handshake.
Makes sense.
If that's the case, Mayor, should we go ahead and just cancel the May 13th license and variance board meeting?
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do that for May 13th, that's fine.
I'll take care of that.
Austin, anything else?
No, that's all.
Corky? I mean, I'm sorry, Travis?
I am working with Tammy and I are going to talk on Monday regarding some of the. Um, I am, uh, working with, uh, Tammy and I are going to talk on Monday, uh, regarding some of the traffic calming stuff we've been working on. But, uh, look forward to a, uh, proud send off tomorrow, but that's all I've got.
Corky?
I have nothing this evening, Your Honor.
All right, Susan?
Yes, um, I wanted, I've gotten some feedback and information from citizens in, uh, terms of code enforcement. And I know we had that, uh, meeting, I believe it was like, was it March 11th, I want to say? Um, I was kind of looking back at my notes, but, um, I think that, uh, I've been thinking about it. I think there's some, um, there's some opportunities for improvements in terms of, uh, the communication. And, um, and I just think that I, uh, maybe if y'all were in agreement that we could, uh, maybe all of us have, may have some, uh, things that we could identify and may, and possibly what I'd like to do is present, uh, give those over to Tammy and have her staff come up with some, um, concrete measures on how to resolve some of the things that, you know, that I see. And maybe part of it, um, is, I know we still don't have a, um, a lead co, uh, code enforcement marshal. So also I wanted to, I was thinking that, uh, that might be, uh, you know, something to do in terms of to start working on those, it, those communication issues. But also I'd like to get an update on where we are with the, um, with the, uh, lead marshal's position. And, um, I'm also curious, uh, when we were going over the budget tonight, uh, what the lead marshals, um, like what that range salary or what that grade range is, not salary, but grade level. And if y'all could give me feedback about that or give us feedback about those things, that would be Either Rusty or Tammy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking up the pay range for you right now.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have it right here in front of me, but yeah, if Rusty, if you can pull it up.
And where, and what about in terms of that position and filling the position?
Is this, is this something we need to go into detail right now or can this be done offline? Uh, you know, we've been, we've been at this three hours and change.
Right. Uh, all, uh, but I was curious about that lead position. But what I would like for us to do is to, uh, maybe come up with some things that we see in our ward. And I've seen quite a few things and it's nothing that anybody's doing anything, anything wrong. I'm not being critical because I think the staff is working really hard and I think Rusty's, uh, working really hard with the code enforcement. But I think sometimes, um, it, there's just some, some gaps there and I, uh, you know, which I can, I was thinking I could, uh, you know, write those down and, uh, maybe give those to Tammy and if everybody else, I mean, based on that meeting that we had on the 11th, I think there were several people that expressed some, um, you know, kind of breakdowns in that, uh, that, in that area in terms of, you know, what they hear from citizens. So I'm just, you know, if that's, if that works for everybody, that would be fine with me. And I can talk about that position later, but I think it's an important position as well. Somebody that can be a good leader in that group.
Okay. Anything else, Susan?
Well, is that something the council would like to do, uh, based on the, where we were at the meeting, um, on the 11th? In terms of the communications, I think we, um, we, it seemed like that we all had some, some concerns within our ward.
I mean, we did, but that was March 11th and then we're in a state of health emergency March 20th. So I think as far as regular code enforcement and normal proceedings in that realm, we're not in a normal environment right now. So I think anything that we can do, you know, if you've got issues that arise in this environment, then I think that we should address those. But you got to understand that we're not anywhere near where we were March 11th in that, in that code enforcement hearing.
Oh, I agree. I agree with what you're saying there. I'm not really speaking about, uh, something that's different now than before. I, I think in a way this could be a good opportunity to sort of look at some of those things. But, you know, it's up to y'all. Uh, I mean, um, you know, in terms of looking into these, uh, these issues, it really, you know, like, it doesn't, it, I don't mean to keep going on about it, but like it is a communication thing, like, and it seems like, uh, citizens, uh, end up having to see things for a long time, like, um, it, and maybe it happens more in some of the neighborhoods of Ward 5. But, um, I, I think I've talked to Tammy about some of these things and we did a ride around way before this, um, pandemic and I, I just rode around yesterday and those issues are still there. The truck with the flat tires is still there in the, in the driveway, uh, on that, on, on, uh, Wells. And I'm not criticizing anyone here. I just, I'm just not, um, you know, the, the, the citizen that reached out to me uh, actually reported it through EGOV last April. So, uh, that's just one thing. And then I saw a sofa and some other furniture that was outside yesterday getting wet. And, and, and I just think, how long will that sit out there before, you know, during this, this time period? What are the communications? Is it, uh, something that, that I think sometimes the citizens, it, uh, maybe a week or 10 days will go by before they even, uh, then, and maybe even more than that before, uh, somebody in the neighborhood says, well, nobody's picking that up. And then they will put it on EGOV and then just the whole communication, it ends up being a long time before it's, it gets removed and
Let me ask, let me ask this question. Is there anybody else having extensive code enforcement issues at the moment in your wards?
No, we only had one, one or two basic issues. We reached out to Rusty about those and I think they were able to, uh, be handled pretty, uh, quickly, whether by observation or by, um, you know, actually some sort of other measures. So, uh, but it's been pretty minimal stuff, uh, for seven.
Susan, maybe it's, maybe it's something that you could do individually with Rusty and code enforcement if you're having specific issues. Because I don't see anybody's microphones lighting up with, with any problems right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll step in here. I, I'll be happy to drive around with you, Susan, and go and do these things. And if you want to set up a weekly meeting with me and discuss the issues that you have, I'm more than happy to do that.
Oh, sure. I know you can't run around now though.
I understand, but you don't, you haven't given me the opportunity. You either
I am not criticizing you at all because you
Let Rusty finish, let Rusty finish.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I do feel attacked at this point. You just said we're not doing our job and we're not responding.
No, I don't even know if you know about some of the things. Why would you know? Uh, and sometimes people call to have a furniture pickup from Public Works. And I think people, sometimes is, does that, how does that get communicated, I guess? And through, uh, Public Works Department, um, because I'm just saying, okay, for example, too, there's a big dumpster that's in the street on Mel Circle. And the guy told, I think you, you said, and I believe that it was removed, but it's back there again. I saw it yesterday. So
Susan, Susan, can I, can I ask, can I ask that we please, I mean, we're, we're three hours and 20 minutes into a, a meeting. Can I ask that you get with Rusty offline and not have 30 people, uh, involved in the discussion when 30 people don't need to be involved in the discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, who's next? I don't even know. Tim?
We had, um, a, a good, uh, meeting, um, earlier today, seems like about 12 hours ago, maybe? Or a day ago? Um, education committee meeting, so it was good. Susan, uh, Lewis, Travis joined us. And then, uh, Jaha Howard and James Wilson were there from the district. Um, yeah, it's very productive. I think we got some follow-ups with, uh, with the county. Two pieces of, one, a very interesting piece of note, uh, information is, I guess James Wilson has been asked to be our point of contact uh, for the district staff level. Um, and Tammy, it made it sound like he had spoken to you maybe about that in general or at least had some communication with you recently?
No. No, we haven't had any communication recently. What he mentioned to you was that he and I worked together when I was on the school board with the, uh, charter school through Cobb County. So he and I have worked in the past before. But James and I have had meetings probably last year, um, year before last, probably, but I have not talked to him recently.
Gotcha. But did I understand that right? So he's going to be, he, Raggedale asked him to be our point of contact? That's what I took away from his comments.
That's what I heard him say, which was a surprise to me when he mentioned it during the meeting. But I, I said, okay, I guess that Mr. Ragdale has, uh, uh, asked him to be the liaison between us um, and, and that he would be working with me. So I, that was my first time hearing that.
Is James with the school board or is he a consultant?
He's a consultant.
He's a consultant.
Say that again, Corky, what you just said?
I think it's a cheap way out.
That's what I thought you said, okay. Uh, I was gonna say, hey, one, um, thing we got to get taken care of is, uh, um, probably Kevin, if Kevin's still on and if Greg is still on, probably a meeting pretty quickly to talk about the Belmont parking lot, um, where the district's at, you know, is requesting to, uh, uh, add 18 spaces, which in itself is positive, but just, I guess, uh, talk about the design of that parking lot. And if we want to, if the city wants to make a request of any design changes. So, uh, maybe I'll get with, um, Kevin, I'll get with you and Greg offline and, and the rest of the committee and see if there's a time, a time to meet.
Tim, I had one question as a follow-up to our meeting. Is anybody aware of a public meeting that was held on the project at Campbell High School? We keep talking about, uh, sort of an input meeting, but it sounds like they were all in the confines of a PTA meeting or something specifically at the school that parents, uh, or students would have been notified, but not necessarily neighbors adjacent to the school. Is anybody aware of a straight up public meeting on the expansion project at Campbell?
So, and I can tell you that I went, I did attend that, uh, meeting that he was referring to at Campbell High School. And, um, that's been some time ago, but there was no, um, definite plans that were presented, uh, at that meeting. There was some vague kind of concepts and, um, and, um, I also was told, uh, numerous times, or the whole group was told, the whole audience, that there would be no net loss of parking spaces. And, um, I just, I had forgotten about that during the meeting today. And, uh, so, uh, you know, the, really the first time that I, um, saw the plans was, uh, I think it was in February. You know, uh, after the city had gotten them. But before that, I mean, everything that was, I've, I've seen was more, uh, concepts. And it, you know, and, and I will add that the, the details are really, what's really important. You couldn't really tell what, you know, the traffic or ingress egress or what was happening totally with that back parking lot and things like that. But anyway, thank you Travis for bringing that up.
Thank you Travis.
Uh, That is it.
Okay. Louis?
Uh, nope, nothing beyond what's already been covered. Uh, thanks much.
We got, we got some time.
I'll do that. I'll, I'll hold off.
All right, I'm going to throw it out to staff. Scott, Tammy, anybody got anything they want to share?
No, sir.
I'll say something, 30 seconds. We got a, uh, opinion today from the Court of Appeals on the condemnation case we tried about a year ago on Wendy Hill, I mean, on, um, Concord, the old Fat Boy Restaurant. We were affirmed of it. We, we tried that to a jury trial and the other side appealed it. And we got an order today from the Court of Appeals. They're still working down there, uh, that affirmed the things that that case is over. Maybe we can work with this guy and try to make him clean up this place now.
Good. If there's nothing else, I'll leave you all with one good piece of information. The guy that hit Officer Ewing was denied bond and he's still sitting in jail. So I'm, I'm pretty happy about that and I know everybody else probably is too. He deserves to be there for a long time. If there's nothing else, uh, we'll see everybody in the morning. Get with Kristi when you get there. And, um, let's have a good day and honor, honor our officer. Thanks, everybody. With that, the meeting's adjourned.
Thanks a lot, guys.